Yes, it is now. Thank you. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this evening's Planning Commission. I'd like to start with the approval of the minutes from October the 10th and October the 24th.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the minutes of October 10th.
Mr. Chairman, this is Jim. I assume that you have the minutes, the two meetings that I made some edits to?
That is correct, sir. I have both the downtown plan charrette, which was October the 10th, and then our regular meeting from October the 24th with your amendments to them.
I would move the adoption of both sets of minutes.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The minutes have been accepted. So, next is the declaration of a conflict of interest. And given the three items, do we have any... Okay. Now, we're moving on to the public hearing and new business. So, we have three items this evening, but in looking at the three items, two of these, A and B, actually have some overlap with the Area 6 small plan. And the third one, which is the SC 2017-01, Medicor Properties Incorporated requests a special exception. Maybe we start with that one. I think that unless any of the other commissioners has an issue, we begin with that one so we can kind of take care of it, and then we can move to the other ones, which will actually have a bit more conversation.
Can we just confirm that the applicant is here and ready to do that, to address it? Okay. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, sir.
Didn't want to move it up and then find out they weren't here.
Okay. That's a good thing. Thank you. So, hearing nothing else, we'll turn it over to Ms. Sherman.
Thank you. Can I have the computer, please? Thank you. Tonight, the Planning Commission is holding a public hearing regarding a special exception to permit the proposed sign for Mary Washington Hospital. Following the close of the public hearing, the Planning Commission should take actions stating its recommendation on the draft resolution that was included in your package. I will provide an overview of the application and answer any questions you may have. Eric Fletcher from Medicor is here and can answer any questions as well. Just to get everyone up to speed before we get into it too much, you all probably remember in 2017, the Planning Commission and the City Council considered a special exception request for two different signs to be placed in the median of Jefferson Davis Highway, near its intersection with Mary Washington Boulevard. Based on City Council's feedback, the applicant revised the application to update the design and to consolidate the two signs into the one that you have before you tonight. In addition, it relocated the signage from the median to the west side of Jefferson Davis Highway, again on the south side of Mary Washington Boulevard, reduced the height from 17.7 feet to 15.75 feet, and reduced the size from 61.5 square feet to 58.62 square feet. The slide before you tonight shows you where the proposed sign will go. The green dot specifically shows its location, again on the west side of Route 1, just south of Mary Washington This is close to the former location of the 29-foot-tall, 229-square-foot freestanding sign shown in the bottom right, which previously stood within the median of the Mary Washington Boulevard, which was again subject to a special exception granted in 2011. This sign was removed to accommodate the road widening project in 2016. Two temporary signs shown on the left were installed in 2016 along Route 1 to maintain visibility for the hospital. These signs will be removed upon approval of permanent signage. As proposed, the three-sided, cube-shaped sign would be located in the Jefferson Davis Highway median, or right-of-way, adjacent to Snowden Office Park on property that's owned CT. The sign, again, is 17.5 feet in height and 58.62 square feet in size. It is designed with internal and external illumination, which is permitted by code. The sign requires exceptions from regulations in the Unified Development Ordinance, Section 72-59.6, to exceed the permitted height and to reduce the setbacks, generally permitting it to be off-site, where the code requires it to be onsite. Specifically, the code allows for Office Park signs to be 10 feet in height, and again, the proposed sign is 15.75 feet in height. The code requires the sign to be onsite and approximately 7.9 feet away from the nearest property line. The proposed sign is within the public right-of-way and not immediately adjacent to the site it is advertising. All other aspects of the sign, including its size and illumination and design, are compliant with the code, as shown here on this slide on the right. The UDO contains review criteria that the Planning Commission and City Council shall use when evaluating an application for a special exception. The application and the staff report details compliance with the noted criteria, but to summarize, item number one, whether or not it's consistent with the comprehensive plan. The sign location is designated for commercial office uses in Planning Area 4, while the larger Mary Washington campus is designated for institutional uses also in Planning Area 4. The comprehensive plan highlights Mary Washington Hospital as an important institutional city partner. Policy number one for institutional jurisdictional partnerships on page 116 is to maintain strong liaisons with the University of Mary Washington and Mary Washington Hospital to share information, support each other's initiatives, and to coordinate efforts. The first opportunity in land use Planning Area 4 on page 162 is to support the continued development of the Mary Washington Hospital, Medicor, or Mary Washington Hospital Medical Campus and surrounding supportive services. Approval of the application would demonstrate support of the Mary Washington Hospital and its initiatives to improve its visibility along the Jefferson Davis Highway corridor. Item number two and item number four, whether or not it's consistent with the UDO and whether or not it's generally consistent with good practices of zoning and consistent with the district it's going to be located and adjacent uses. The proposed sign does not conform to all the UDO signage regulations, hence the reason we're here talking about this special exception. Specifically, the proposed sign exceeds the maximum permitted height in the CT zoning district, and it's located off-site within public right-of-way, not adjacent to the hospital. Jefferson Davis Highway, though, is a primary entrance to the city's only hospital and trauma center. It provides emergency and daily medical care of city residences. Commercial uses exist along this corridor. Nearby signage is similar in height, size, and design of the proposed sign, with the exception of the Snowden Office Park, which is approximately five feet shorter than the proposed sign, but almost equal in sign area. Other signs, like the CVS Pharmacy sign, match very similarly to this sign, and the Weiss Market sign exceeds the height and size considerably. Both of those signs are located in the CSC zoning district, however. Number three, criteria number three, is whether or not there's been sufficient time to consider the application, and there has been. All advertising and notification requirements have been met. Item number five is whether or not this is a special or extraordinary application, and certainly, Mary Washington Hospital is a unique institutional partner of the city of Fredericksburg. It's the only one that the city has, and this is not likely to be a renewed request that we see again. Number six is whether or not there are adverse impacts with the proposal, and there are. I mean, certainly, as you have a taller sign closer to the right-of-way, there are potential impacts. However, the proposed conditions should mitigate those impacts. With that, staff recommends approval of the application, subject to the four conditions included in your package and here on the screen. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions?
I'd just like to ask one question. Have you considered what impact it would be to make it a 10-foot-high sign to their signage?
I think that's a good question for the hospital. What I'll tell you is that they have tried to reduce it. What they've told us is that they've tried to reduce it to the extent that they can while making sure that it's visible from both north and southbound traffic from a good distance away. But Mr. Fletcher may have some added input on that.
Okay. Thank you.
How many other signs on Highway 1 that had to go through this waiver process are there? I mean, I understand that they're existing ones, but that shopping center's been built a long time, probably before this current code was in place. How many waivers have we granted?
The only exception I'm aware of is the previous one issued to Mary Washington Hospital. The sign at Weiss Markets at that shopping center predates and doesn't comply with our current code.
Okay. Have you, from the city side, have you received any complaints from emergency medical services or anything that people aren't able to find the hospital?
I have not, but I understand that to be part of the study that Mary Washington undertook in designing this sign.
Okay. But that wasn't in our packet, right?
Correct.
Okay. And my third question would be, if the sign was built near the CVS, the existing CVS sign, is that still, in terms of proximity to the building and the current requirements, would that be less of a factor if it was built on that side of the street? I understand they probably own that piece of land, but...
The zoning district there is the CSC zoning district, which allows for a sign in compliance with the height that they've asked for and the size that they've asked for.
Oh, okay. Thank you. And then, sir, I do have some questions for the applicant once he comes up.
Correct. So, I just have one question. So, there was no way, I mean, I know we widened the roadway there. So, there was no way to place another sign similar to what was in that particular area?
The median where it previously stood was completely removed.
Okay.
They tried to work with the owners of the Snowden Office Park in 2015, 2016, and could not obtain an easement for a proposed sign on that site.
Yes, sir.
This is Jim Pates. First, I have a question or two, but if I could just ask everybody when they speak to get close to their microphone, because sometimes I'm having trouble hearing people. But Marty, I was wondering, now, this sign is entirely within the public right-of-way, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Right. And so, the two issues that arise with this sign, first of all, it's an off-premises sign, which is the same thing as a billboard, and we generally, you know, don't want those. It's also very close to the road, and so there are obvious issues with it being right there on the highway. With that said, I think this application and this proposal is a huge improvement over what they were attempting to do before, and I think they've done a very good job in trying to do it. Now, but with it being in the right-of-way, I'm assuming that the city is going to have to grant some sort of long-term lease on this space to the hospital?
That's correct. The city has a lease in place for a variety of other signs that the hospital has in its right-of-ways, and City Council would have to amend that lease when it takes action on this application.
I see. And that's a vehicle for the city. I haven't seen that or know what they would change in it, but that's certainly another opportunity for the city to get any other terms or conditions that it sees as being appropriate, and that seems to me is a very good way of handling any sort of special circumstances for the sign. So, I think this is a good proposal, and it's better than what we had before.
Any other questions? So, on to the applicant, and I would just ask that folks, do you approach the lectern, name and address, please?
Good evening. My name is Eric Fletcher. I'm a senior vice president with Mary Washington Healthcare, located at 1001 Sam Perry Boulevard. I'm here to answer any of your questions tonight about this proposal. Also wanted to commend staff. Ms. Sherman outlined this very well. Y'all are probably tired of hearing about this sign. We've been talking about this for two years, and think we've come to what is a decent compromise. I personally preferred the 29-foot sign with the digital billboard in it, but being good neighbors, we've worked with staff and with you all to come to what we believe is a, you know, fair compromise. The size of the sign, we've worked with Corbin Signs, which is a national sign vendor, and they have a lot of studies about the size of lettering on signs and what the size of that lettering has to be to be visible from a certain distance at a certain speed. And so, this is about as small as we can go and still make that sign visible as you come, if you're coming northbound, as you crest and come underneath the University of Mary Washington Bridge, to be able to see the sign from about that distance. Or if you're coming south and you're past the light at Fall Hill, if you can manage to see your way around the Weiss and the Taco Bell and the Verizon and all these other signs that are much bigger, you might be able to pick out the Mary Washington Hospital sign. So, again, we feel like it's a compromise. We appreciate the staff's time and work with us over the past couple of years on this. And since I have your ear for one second, I'll mention to you that just today, we learned that Mary Washington Hospital has been designated as one of the top 50 cardiovascular hospitals in the country. We have an outstanding community resource in Mary Washington Hospital, both from a cardiovascular perspective, from a trauma center perspective, the only one in the region, stroke center, many other reasons that we feel like there needs to be some demarcation of this institution on the roadway. So, thank you for hearing our case.
Commissioners, any questions?
Okay. So, I guess the first question, just trying to understand, the availability of getting the sign across the street, like near the CVS, which is, according to staff, would not require anything, because the sign that you want to print would be allowed in that area. Can you elaborate maybe on the reason that you're not going with that route?
Yeah, I know that we have tried about 16 different locations. We've tried signage on the light poles above Mary Washington Boulevard. We've tried signage across the street in what is the University of Mary Washington area. I know that we had talked to CVS at one point. I don't remember the reason that that wasn't the location that was selected, but we have, we feel like we have been thorough in trying to find every possible place where we can put this. And I might ask Ms. Sherman if you know more than I do about the CVS detail.
What I was told is that the CVS was not responsive to the request to put the sign there. And let me make one point, too. They would still need a special exception for it being off-site from Mary Washington Hospital, but in terms of its size and height, it would comply.
Right. But to build the lettering size that their study has said, it could go there if that special exception was approved?
Yes.
Okay. What are the sizes of the other two signs that you have at Fall Hill and Cowan Boulevard? You have two entryway signs there as well.
Yeah, I would have to pull that, sir. The Cowan sign we brought, we came here and got approved several years ago, and I want to say it was close to 20 feet in height. It does not have the digital piece in it.
Right.
But it's larger than this sign, the one on Cowan.
Okay. And there was alluded to that there was a study done in terms of impact of people not being able to find the hospital. Can you provide some of that detail?
Yeah, I can. It was actually some focus group work that we did, which now is, I did that work when we were first coming here to propose the new signs that since, the one on Route 1 that since has been removed. So, that has to be five or six years ago. But it was, it was focus group work from EMS providers and then members of the community. What we found is that EMS knows where the hospital is. That's not the issue. It's with our transient population, anybody new to the community is not always sure where the hospital is, and so we need good signage on our major thoroughfares to make sure people can see the emergency department, you know, know where the stroke center is, know where the trauma center is. And so, we did get that through our focus group work. Again, it was, it was a while ago.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. O'Toole, Mr. Slomensky?
No, I'm good.
The only question I have is, is there a fear going southbound, that people will see the sign and turn one exit past that? Has that been discussed, or has that been a thing that's been...
I'd like more signage. Is that...
Yeah, well, I'm just, I'm just, it's curious if this truly solves the problem, or it's the best we can do.
It's the best. I feel like it's the best we can do. We brought to you what we really would like to have done, and you guys asked us to come and compromise, and so we have compromised and compromised and compromised, and we're there, we feel.
No, you've done a great job. I just, like I said, just wanted to ask that question.
So, just one question. So, you mentioned that you looked at the light poles, and what was the challenge there?
Yeah. The, I'm not an engineer here, but it had to do with the amount of force that when you put placards over the light poles, the wind can catch those placards, and the amount of force that that puts on the, on the light pole was a concern for the city, as I understand it. Was that fair? Did I characterize that okay, Ms. Sherman?
Yes. I think Doug Fawcett, our Assistant City Manager, Doug Fawcett in Public Works, looked at that and looked at the VDOT criteria, and there's certain weight limits and things for those arm masts, and that was not the best solution.
Okay. Any other questions here? Mr. Pates, any questions online?
Jim, did you have any comments?
No, I have no further comments.
Okay. All right. Will of the commission, I'll entertain a motion here. Sorry. Anybody else to speak on this matter? I apologize for that.
My name is Dr. Montgomery Johns, and I have an office in Snowden Office Park, and I have a concern that the traffic pattern has changed since they redesigned Route 1 and the access to the hospital. And our entrance now to Snowden Office Park is on Route 1. So, someone going north has to swing a U-turn in front of that intersection, and that's one of the busiest intersections in town. And I'm concerned that a large sign, it's going to obstruct the view. It's close to the road. I'm just concerned there may be some, some damage there that could occur. Also, you said that the median disappeared, but there is a median there. So, isn't there any way they could put it back in the median? Is that, I thought was an ideal, like, location before.
The median that is in Mary Washington Boulevard is a fairly narrow concrete median and wouldn't support the width and size of the sign and the clearance from the travelways that it would need. And then, to talk to your first point, the diagrams in the exhibit do show compliance with the site distance at the corner, so the engineers verified that it would not obstruct site distance in that area from the new entrance to Snowden Office Park.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi. Thank you for letting me speak. My name's Valerie Johns, and I'm an office owner also with my husband. And there's a concern. I know we met with Mary Washington Hospital a couple of years ago, the owners of our office complex, and we were concerned about them putting a sign right at our office complex, because, number one, if you put the sign where you want to put it, at this point, the only entrance going, going toward the shopping center is, the next entrance up is our parking lot entrance. And we, right now, are having people swing through our parking lot just as a shortcut to get down to Mary Washington Boulevard, and that's becoming a traffic situation that isn't really good, and we have private property. We, and a number of the people have rented their office spaces. It's a medical complex mostly, and there have been people who have rented to VCU and to UVA, and then we're going to have a sign right in front that's going to say Mary Washington Hospital. This is private property, and I think there should be some respect shown for that. And I don't believe a number of the people who own condos there know about this meeting tonight, because overwhelmingly, people did not want this sign on, on the property. The other thing is, they suggested to have it at the CVS, and the comment was made by the lady here that, that the CVS is on, has a large sign, but it is on CVS property. In our case, you're putting a sign in front of a private office complex, which we, if we as a group would want to sell the complex and possibly even sell it to VCU or something, you know, we have a Mary Washington sign in front of our complex, and I think you have to consider property rights here and the rights of individual owners. But thank you for letting me speak.
That concludes the public hearing on this particular matter. Motion?
I make a motion that we accept SC 2017-01, request for a special exemption to install one sign for Mary Washington Hospital on the west side of Jefferson Davis Highway.
All right. We have a motion, and we have a second. All right.
Can I just make a comment?
Okay.
I just, I just wanted to state that I support our partnership in the city of Fredericksburg with Mary Washington, but I also support safety, and I just want to make sure, and when we look at vacating right-of-ways, that's a big concern for me. You know, I understand it's in a public right-of-way. It's not on private property, but, you know, the city will have to go through renegotiating a lease and everything else to make that happen, and I just, I can't support that right now, and I don't think there's enough information to say that it's a safety issue based on what was presented tonight, that, you know, that we need to have this 15-foot sign in that area. So, that's why I'll be voting against this.
All right. Any other comments? Cast your votes. Motion carries. Four to one.
Well, I haven't voted.
Okay, I guess point of order. How would we take, does he get to say yea or nay?
Yes.
Okay. So, point of order. All right. Mr. Pates, please cast your vote.
Okay. I vote aye. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay. So, that annotation will be made when we vote on the next items. Thank you for that, Mr. Pates.
Sure thing.
Moving on. The next item is UDOTA 2018-03, Commercial Highway Form-Based Code. The city of Fredericksburg proposes to amend Unified Development Ordinance subsection 72-30, zoning districts to provide for form-based zoning generally, and to add form-based regulations to the commercial highway zoning district. Mr. Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If I could have the computer, too, please. Okay. The issue before you all tonight is the creation of a form-based code for commercial highway zone property within the T5C zoning district. There are generally five parts that will go through, and then we'll give the staff recommendation, which is to approve the text of... the text amendment, and I will go through the presentation now. It's always helpful with this kind of presentation on a policy change to kind of go back through how we got here. So I thought some overview slides may be helpful. So what you're seeing on your screen here is the city boundary here, outlined in black. This green boundary line is the boundary of Area 3, and that was the focus of the Area 3 Small Area Plan, and what I'm about to talk about now would only apply within that boundary. But looking at the city as a whole, what this map shows is all of the existing residential areas in the city, and just from a discussion point about what are we planning and what is the future of the city, these areas are stable residential areas, and we are not going to plan much change there, as a spoiler alert for the rest of the area plans. And you've got apartment complexes, you've got R4 zoned land, you have Idlewild. We are going to have to deal with expected growth and change in our economy. These areas aren't really the areas where we're going to plan that. Another kind of set of land use that we've got in the city are our employment centers and our big kind of commercial centers in Celebrate Virginia. And let me just show you where they are here. This is the hospital campus here we were just talking about. We've got Cowan Crossings down here, which is a new commercial. We've got another office park here. We've got Celebrate Virginia and Central Park. We've got the Industrial Park. We've got industrial zoned land down here on the bottom of the city. And then here, we have a new employment center. This was actually the first implementation piece of the Area 3 Small Area Plan, was the Hilton Plan Development Medical Campus rezoning. So we've got these places in the city, these land uses that have this identity as this kind of core employment type of land use already. Another interesting piece that we have here, as very unique, is the downtown. The downtown is relatively stable. We're not going to see massive changes here and there. It does definitely have its own strengths and challenges, and we're going to go through those in detail, and we can talk about that. You all saw the email about the Area 7 work that's underway. So, but again, this area is already formed to some extent. And then you put all these together, and you see that our map is pretty much colored in. And I do want to point one thing out that I didn't point out. When you look at this land here, these are actually vacant parcels, okay? They're zoned R2. This is 33 acres, this is 20 acres, this is 50, 60 acres here. So there's that raw land that we've got in the city. It's vacant, it's zoned R2. At some point, some private entity is going to come through and want to rezone that to some of the land use, and we need to keep that in mind in our planning. But when you fill the map back in, you notice that that's it. There's two things to point out here. We don't have much raw land for planning. We're really in a redevelopment planning mode. And when you look at these areas that have this kind of identity, you start to see that there are areas that were built for a purpose that they've grown out of, and most of them are RCH zoned areas. So you see these gaps, and here I'll highlight them here for you. We've got Princess Sand and Route One developed as the original Route One, and then the US Route One bypass. We've got the area around Augustine Avenue. We've got an old strip center along Fall Hill Avenue. We've got the lower spectrum of Route One here, the southern spectrum, we'll see the lower section, where the land uses were all designed in Dixon Street as well. They were all designed and planned and built under the Commercial Highway Zoning District or Commercial Shopping Center Zoning District in the 80s, and they absorb those automobile-oriented uses ever since. But now these areas are starting to evolve. There's one big area in particular here that's colored in green that is very similar to those areas, and that is our Route 3 corridor. The Route 3 corridor was a focal point of the Area 3 Small Area Plan. The area plan market analysis found an oversaturation of retail and decline in commercial building stock. It's harder to lease these places, they're Class C, they're aging, and the demand for which they were built is changing. The market demand that was found in the market analysis is going to soon lead to the redevelopment of these centers for residential uses, and our zoning ordinance currently permits this, but it permits it more in the fashion of what you see here, with separated uses, apartments and parking lots, separated from commercial uses and parking lots. So the Area 3 Small Area Plan came up with the T5C policy toolkit to get ahead of this eventual emerging trend, to ensure that as residential uses were introduced into this area, and only when they're introduced into this area, only when residential comes into play, that the automobile landscape evolves into sustainable mixed-use urban fabric. And that is the point of why we're here today. And basically, the focus of the T5C transect is to take this kind of existing collection of uses dependent on that arterial roadway, the separated shopping center that has no streets, and our single-use neighborhoods that are wholly, only connected to that system by a connection to Route 3, and move more towards a network of blocks and streets that are interconnected, that are not solely dependent on the automobile, can support transit and walkability. We're going to look at frontage standards. Currently, there aren't any streets in these shopping centers, so there's no streetscape. But the streetscape is a very important part of our life when we're out of the car. It defines how you feel and what you do in a place, and how much time you spend there. This is actually a picture over here on the right of Libby Hill that's off of, shoot, I'm going to forget the name, US Route 33 in Richmond, Staples Mill Road, that's an example of a retail frontage, a new development in that area, that's a real good example of what this code would require as new uses are developed. And then finally, we're going to look at lot and building type standards, this is kind of the final piece, where we go from, this is the Coles, a building that was built for a purpose, but that is 500 uninterrupted feet of just blank brick wall. And then how do you get to this type of architectural environment that's designed for you to be there, not just to drive and get in the place and get out? And that's what we're talking about today. So I'm going to go through the pieces of the code now, and it's a lot, so keep your questions in mind. We could do them on the run if you want, if you want to interrupt me, or we can wait till the end. It's up to you guys however you want to do it. But I'll stay at a high level until you all want to get into the details. So first, urban fabrics.
Mr. Craig, I got one quick question, I think just to help frame the discussion. Earlier you said that this was a tool and toolkit only when residential uses were introduced into the CH within a T5 transect?
Yes, sir.
Or any small, it's any small area plan that we've adopted where you have CH, or is it only the T5C with any adopted small area plan?
Let's see, let's double check.
I guess my next question is, there have been, or the follow-up with that is, a couple times you said this is what would be required, and I want to make sure it's clear, are we talking about this becoming the standard? Are we talking about this being a tool only when the residential uses are introduced? I just want to make sure that's clear, because a lot of the discussion's talking about requirements, and I get it, but it's...
This would only be required in the Commercial Highway Zoning District when residential uses are introduced, which they're permitted by right now, and they can just go in and redevelop. So when they go in, these regulations will apply within a T5C transect as they're adopted.
Okay, so under that scenario, the major change would be that someone who today by right could build a mixed-use building with some residential under the CH, in order to get that residential in the future, would have to comply with these requirements. You couldn't build a mixed-use building without complying?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just want to make sure I understood that.
Chris, if I may follow up on that question, because under the new proposed zoning ordinance, you would still have residential 12 units to the acre by right, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and so you're saying now that even though people can normally, by right, build 12 units to the acre today on this commercial highway property, so if somebody wanted to put, you know, eight units next to or part of the site where there's an existing shopping center, how are you possibly going to impose this new form that you're seeking without tearing down those shopping center?
Yeah, that's a good question. These new rules only apply to the areas, and let me point you to the, tell me if this gets onerous, right? But I'm looking at, if you're looking at the ordinance, we're looking at page nine, 2A, the development site. You have to bring the entire area that you use to calculate your residential density into compliance. So if you do your eight acres on a, you know, whatever that math equals, a quarter of an acre, just, let's just say that, which I don't think that's right, but you would bring that quarter of an acre into compliance with this, with these set of rules. And you could use the rest of the shopping center for shopping center purposes. You can also come in and build a McDonald's or a gas station under the current rules, and you will have no additional restrictions. We're not, this is a tool to ensure that as these places evolve, as residential uses are built into them, that the fabric that that residential use relies on evolves as well.
So what you're talking about is that map at the top on page nine, the drawing?
Yes, sir, letter A, the development site.
Right, right. So essentially, one of the things that this ordinance is intended to accomplish is to essentially phase out existing shopping centers and prohibit new ones?
No, sir.
I mean, strictly commercial uses like that?
No, sir. You can do, this does not apply, if you come in and want to redevelop that whole shopping center as a commercial shopping center, great. That sounds great. We're going to regulate it under the current rules. There is no change proposed.
That's right, because this only comes into play when you're adding the residential, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood that. You know, this whole ordinance is pretty complicated. I think we're going to need some time to go through it in more detail. But anyway, thank you.
And then I guess, real quick on that, it seems to also have an exclusion if you're developing entirely as residential. Is that also an exclusion? So if, does this only apply if it's a mixed use where you're mixing commercial?
I think so.
Or if I, if someone were to propose on a small piece to build some townhomes, and townhomes are permitted under CH, could they do that under the traditional, the standard means of today, or would they also have to comply?
Any residential use in the CH, when we go through these area plans, we look at these old shopping centers and we say, hey, that's one that needs this policy toolkit. Any residential use that's proposed within those areas will have to comply. It can be standalone, townhomes, it could be mixed use. There is a provision to permit by special use permit, an increase from 12 to 24 units per acre, which would require mixed use. That is a provision, but otherwise, whenever you introduce residential, whether standalone or not, these rules apply.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, these are good questions so far, and keep them coming, because like Mr. Pates said, this is a complicated thing, and I'm hoping to get it all through to you guys. What you're looking at here is the urban fabric standards. The real focus of this T5C policy transect tool really is the urban fabric standards. The real need in this area is that as these places evolve, whether they're mixed use or residential or whatever, we need to get the kind of fabric that's going to require less, it's going to have, reduce the impact of either of these developments, commercial or residential, on our services, that'll let people get out of their cars, that can functionally support transit, that can have people, have places to be where they live. So this is really the key. Going from left to right on the screen, access is big. First, you have to add streets, period. I mean, you just got to build streets. And they have to, if you go down here, be arranged into blocks. So that's the first two tools. All these are tied back into our development standards. So our streets are to VDOT standards, until we start talking about the frontage stuff, which would meet VDOT standards, but is another kind of layer. Our blocks are to the city standard. And then there's two additional kind of site tools that go into the urban fabric standards. The first, I think, is probably the most important, well, I don't know, they're all equally as important to me, but transitional zones. So a transitional zone, you can see this diagram here, is automatically established wherever there's an adjacency to single-family residential. It doesn't matter if it's here in this diagram, or if it's over here, or if it's this piece here, wherever that appears, the code looks around and says, okay, you have to do a transitional zone there. And that transitional zone has some good requirements to ensure that there's an appropriate transition to that single-family residential neighborhood. The primary tool is to require only, or permit only, the transitional building type, which is, if it's residential, 35 feet or three stories, which is equivalent to the R4 zoning district. And if it is commercial, 25 feet or two stories. And it also has a maximum building width of 50 feet. So again, the whole building form itself will transition, and in addition, you'll have the site tools and the transitional zone, and let me read those to you here, too. There will be a minimum 40-foot setback, and that's illustrated by this dash line here. So currently, there's a 25-foot setback from commercial highway to residential. This would require additional setback at 15 additional feet. Within that setback, there would be two elements, one of two elements that would be required. Again, we're trying to connect the tissue a little bit better. If it is compatible and physiographically able to be implemented, an alley would be back there, which would also be required to permit access to these single-family homes so that they could have that shared use facility. And if that's not possible, then a type D landscape buffer would go in between the two uses. So that's the transitional zone. And then moving down to this next diagram here, currently, our open space is general. You can count a lot of stuff towards your open space. You can count, you know, these areas, your parking lots that are in islands, you can count stormwater ponds, you can count stream channels and the associated RPA. That's great. We've kept the same amount of open space that's required, but we've added an additional element called a formal open space. If you remember the Hamptons rezonings, part of their design that was successful was that they had a network of formal squares going through the middle of their development. They had little plazas in front of some of the townhomes, and those all connected together into a recreational area where people can go. I mean, it was, it gave people the kind of amenities that we enjoyed, you know, in the other areas of the city. So there are certain rules about that open space, and they're designed to ensure that it's all compact, that it's up against a road, so that it's accessible, that it's not hidden kind of in the back, that it retains a certain shape so that it's usable. And those are all the tools that are associated with the formal open space, with the addition that there's also a level of planting required in there. We've likened that, we've tied that to the type B landscaping buffer, which is our aesthetic landscaping buffer. We didn't want to create a dark, dense forest, but we wanted a certain level of landscaping, so the aesthetic landscaping buffer seemed to be the right thing to do there. That's urban fabric standards. If you guys want to move on, Ray, you look like maybe you want to say something?
I just had a quick question. In the transitional zone, regarding the alleyway, what would be the minimum distance, or is it just within that 40 feet, some type of alley? I know we've had discussions.
Well, we, minimum distance on, you're talking about the width of the alley?
Yeah.
20 feet?
Okay. All right.
I had one question. On your open space, can you talk a little bit more about the landscaping requirements in particular? What about canopy trees?
Mr. Pates, that's a good question, and Marnie...
I can't even, you know, remember what the type B landscaping is. Can you describe some of that some more?
It is a mixture of canopy and understory and bushes. I do not have the ordinance sitting in front of me right now, and I can't read you the requirement in there, but it's a mixture of different planting levels, and it would require some canopy trees. trees.
I thought you had it memorized.
Ah, no.
But yeah, I'm interested in learning more about that, uh, at some point. Thank you.
Okay, frontage standards. Uh, the frontage standards are, uh, an interesting tool, and, and in each of these diagrams that you see on the screen, the frontage is the area, this is the center line of the roadway, this is the public right-of-way, this is the property line separating the public and the private space, and then here's the building front. That entire area makes up, uh, third space, makes up the public realm, uh, public-private realm. Uh, and these form-based codes, uh, have specific standards about how you develop them to ensure, one, that there's continuity along your streetscapes, that they're active, uh, that they're scaled appropriately for whatever the, the primary user is going to be. And along these shopping centers, uh, the pri- the primary user differs. Uh, it's not all the same on our frontages. Uh, so we've got two levels of, of really an automobile frontage. There are Route Three and the primary frontage. These are all designated in a map. These do not change. Uh, let's see if I can show you, point you to the map in here. It is on page 12 of your ordinance, uh, where we've designated, uh, Route Three, primary roads, and some secondary roads. Those are, those are generally static. Uh, no one can develop a new center and come in and say, hey, I'm going to design this around Route Three frontage. Uh, that is designated. Uh, with the other two on the right, however, the retail and the secondary, they will be able to designate those within their sites, uh, but I'll talk about that in a second. So the, the, uh, the two automobile-oriented frontages, uh, they would have taller, uh, streetlights, they'd be between 20 and 40 feet in height. Uh, along Route Three, due to the character of the, uh, power poles there, uh, we currently require can- uh, understory trees along the route, uh, along the road. Uh, we wanted to permit an area, uh, to have more canopy trees, uh, and, and then have some additional landscaping. So this area here, in between this, the property line extending into the property where the blue dash line is, would actually be a 15-foot wide required landscaping area where additional planting would be required. Uh, the trees would be the additional planting. Uh, we would also take any foundation planting or any of the parking lot screening landscaping that's required under the ordinance and, and move that into that area. So you would have a cohesive landscape area, uh, along the Route Three frontage. Um, also, the sidewalk would be moved back off the street. It would go into that landscaping area. Uh, Route Three is about as automobile corridor as you can get in the city of Fredericksburg, and we're planning it that way. Uh, that's an area where, uh, the automobile should have the right-of-way. Uh, the primary frontage is, is relatively similar with one except, with a couple of exceptions. One, uh, the, the, there's not, uh, the presence of power poles so much, uh, so the, uh, so you can support canopy trees within the public right-of-way. Uh, and also, our primary frontages, uh, sometimes have trails along them in our trails plan. So we have put the, uh, the trail within the public right-of-way and made the note that, hey, wherever, uh, the trails plan calls for that pathway, that you build a pathway. Uh, you can see the buildings are permitted to be set back. The parking lot is, is permitted to extend up to the building front, uh, but there are controls on how much of that frontage, uh, can be open parking lot. Uh, let me see what we've got here. Uh, a minimum of 75% of that, uh, nope, a minimum of 66% of that length of that center, uh, would be building, building facade. Uh, and then 33% could be, uh, open to the parking lot, and the parking lot couldn't come up to the right-of-way, it would have to be in line with the building. But that is a, uh, a reasonable approach to, to permitting some parking to be visible. Moving on to the other two, I'll focus on the retail frontage. Uh, the retail frontage, uh, would be the one place where retail's permitted. So the market analysis, uh, found that we're, we're not only oversaturated, but we're probably, we're under demolished in terms of our retail space. It's, it's aging, it's a, it's a, uh, an aging quality, I'll say it that way. It's not, you know, it is what it is. It's getting old, uh, and it needs to be redeveloped and repositioned, uh, to keep up with kind of the modern retail environment. Uh, in order to do that, uh, we've, we've created this retail frontage, and that would be a cohesive frontage where the, the new retail use would go up to. So think again about that picture of Libby Hill, if you can get to there. Um, all your retail goes along a street like this. Uh, or another good example is at the Spotsman Mall, uh, where they've got, uh, some level of streetscaping and pedestrian-scaled amenities, uh, though this is a little bit different from that. Yes, sir.
So just looking at that, that picture, the, uh, that Libby Hill, is that what you call it? Yeah. So I noticed on the, like, on the requirements, it just says a, a 10-foot sidewalk, but we don't specify a material type or anything for the sidewalk. Is that something, what rationale for that?
Yeah, we, uh, we did have materials in this draft, and there are areas in the city leading into our historic districts, uh, Prince's Inn Corridor and Lafayette, where, when we do our form-based codes for that area, for like the Maker District or the Lafayette Boulevard Corridor, uh, we will be able to incorporate those in, uh, but not along this corridor. It's, it's not permitted in the zoning legally.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Uh, and yeah, you said 10-foot sidewalks, let me show you something else here. Uh, so if this was the public right-of-way line here, yeah, that would be required to be a full width sidewalk, but then also the sidewalk would be required to extend up to the building front as well. Uh, so that, that is the retail frontage. The buildings are required to be very close to the street. A hundred percent of the Build Two Zone has to contain the buildings, no parking lots kind of creeping out in front of it. Uh, the secondary, uh, frontage is, is somewhat similar, let me get back there, uh, in that the buildings are, are close, the streetscape is parallel on street parking, trees and lights, uh, and the buildings, uh, like I said, there's a very narrow Build Two range, so the buildings don't vary much in terms of their setback, uh, they are relatively close. Uh, we're not asking for, since this is probably more of a residential application, uh, if you were to institute townhomes or some kind of, uh, like quadplexes or something like that, uh, you would have more of the residential frontage with a yard and just the five-foot sidewalk. We wouldn't have the full retail frontage with the, with the heavy infrastructure for people to kind of congregate and gather. Uh, the final piece of this tool, and I'm on page, uh, final piece of the, the functional tool, I'm on page 18 through 20, uh, are the building, uh, lot and building type standards. Uh, generally, uh, in terms of the lot standards, uh, the, the bulk, R12 bulk standards currently apply, uh, in the CH zoning district. We've, we've changed that for building types, uh, multifamily, commercial, or mixed-use buildings, where along that retail frontage, let me go back to it, uh, you see how these buildings all have zero lot line? They all butt up against each other. And that is how you build something that looks like this here, where this is a collection of different buildings with zero lot lines, and they form this wall. Uh, so we did change those standards to permit that, so they wouldn't have to get variances to do the kind of streetscape that we want. But when it comes to single-family attached and single-family detached, the, the kinds of uses where personal property owners would be involved, we stuck with the R12 lot standard, so they would have to meet the same, uh, minimum lot size, minimum lot lit wa- width, inside and rear setbacks on the parcel itself. Uh, but the building types is, is the, uh, is the form-based tool. Uh, these control height, uh, they control the width of the building, uh, and they would control what we call the transparency. Uh, in general, uh, buildings would be permitted to be four stories or 50 feet tall. Uh, we do have a provision that in a general building type, so this is outside of a transitional zone, this is not inside of a transitional, this is outside of a transitional zone, uh, they could come to you all for a special use permit, uh, up to 65 feet and five stories. And I think we had a good discussion about that, uh, uh, in one of our meetings, uh, previously, where we had previously had stories written into the ordinance, and, and I think this group was concerned that you could build a 25-foot story, uh, and suddenly have a 75-foot building. So we did include the heights in there as well. Uh, maximum building width would be 150 feet. Uh, we would permit you, let me show you this, uh, we would permit, if this was all one building here, back to Libby Hill, uh, but they do this full facade differentiation, you can meet that standard that way, if that's the modern construction technique that you're going to use. Uh, and then finally, the transparency, uh, has to do with the amount of wall that's occupied by windows. Uh, for a general building, it's 25%. Uh, when you get to a retail building, which has the same rules here, uh, there are additional rules about transparency, uh, that would require a higher transparency on the first floor, no matter what the use of the building is, so that you would have somewhat of a storefront, so that when retail went in, say it was an office first, they would design to this retail standard with the height, with the transparency, so that it could, you know, load in retail, load out retail, since this retail frontage is going to be the only place where retail's permitted.
Excuse me, Mike, do we, I'm a little confused about these buildings. Are, are they going to be owned individually?
Sure, they can be. We're, we're not getting into ownership structure. They can be owned individually, they can be, uh, owned all by the same entity.
So conceivably, you could have a 50-foot or a 65-foot building next to a lot smaller building?
Within the development.
Within this whole, we could have all kind of different elevations and...
Sure. Kind of like the downtown, yeah.
Okay. Is that the modern approach? Because you look at this picture here, they're all at the same relative...
Oh, Libby Hill, yeah.
Yeah.
Sure. I mean, the difference between four and two stories, though, I don't, I'm not sure that it's so dramatic. Um, the difference between five stories and two stories, I don't know that that's real dramatic either, but that would require a special use permit to build a five-story building, and you could check for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mike, I wanted to, if I may, I wanted to ask a few questions about, to step back a minute on this ordinance. It seems to me that, as I recall, the, from, from our area plan for this area, and this ordinance, um, is trying to encourage the redevelopment of some of these shopping centers, correct?
Uh, well, it's twofold. Uh, one is to get ahead of the redevelopment that's coming, but then, two, we want to design a program that works, uh, and, and when we do get someone that's interested, we get the right kind of development.
But, well, let me put it this way, then. Then what's in this ordinance that will be encouraging redevelopment of our existing shopping centers in this area? On Route Three?
Well, either the market analysis indicated that the demand was coming, and, uh, so again, I think that we're trying to get ahead of that, uh, so that as, as these centers evolve, so does the infrastructure, and that the appropriate party is the one that is doing that work, that we don't have to come in and build streets in the future, uh, from the public perspective. Uh, but there is a provision to go from 12 to 24 units an acre. It does require mixed use. Uh, is that enough, uh, of, 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 of a level of use that it makes it more attractive for people to come in and work with us on a special use permit? Should we let that go by right? Would that be more of a, more of a, uh, uh, means for people to evolve these centers? That's, that's a good question, uh, but that would be the one thing I think I would see, Mr. Pace.
Right, but, but do you see anything else in this ordinance that you think would be encouraging redevelopment of those shopping centers, other than the, the, uh, allowing the additional density?
Well, I think that there's some certainty in the process. Uh, if you're, if you're going to, uh, develop correctly, if you're gonna create the type of environment and the type of infrastructure that's beneficial to the city, uh, you, you know what it is going in, there's no surprises, I think that is a benefit.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so, so if you have something like the Greenbrier Shopping Center right now, um, you have a, a rough idea of how many acres that is?
Yes, sir, it's 17.
It's 17 acres, okay. So today, in that CH zone, somebody would be able to build 12 units to the acre, or sorry, 17 times 12 by right, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and so what this ordinance would do would be to allow that to double, to go to 24 units, if it's, and, and along with the, uh, the mixed use, correct?
Yep.
Only, only with special use permit.
Right, yeah.
Right. Okay. Um, and so that's, that's, I don't have my math here, let's see, that's 28, that's, that's, uh, six, uh, 14, one, three. That can't be right. 400 units?
368.
So, but 17 times 24, isn't that around 400?
It's 408.
408, yeah.
So, so I'm, I'm just trying to get an idea here. Okay, so let's say somebody buys that property, decides that they want to tear down the shopping center and replace it with a mixed-use project that could have roughly 400 new residential units, correct? By special use permit?
Yes.
And the second special use permit would be to go up 65 feet, right?
They could request that, yes, sir.
Yeah. So the, my point there is, is that, is it, it may or may not be a good thing, but, but this ordinance and, and the area plan, uh, envisions a potentially far more urban, uh, development there along Route Three than what we have today.
Well, I mean, you know, levels of urbanness are relative, and the, the levels that we're talking about here in an Area Six are very low. 24 units an acre is the, is permitted by right in a commercial downtown. Uh, some of our best buildings, uh, the one next door to here with J. O'Brien's is, uh, is 70 units an acre. Uh, the one across the street is 114 units an acre. I mean, it's all, it's all kind of relative, uh, levels of, of urban, uh, development. So, uh, it's interesting to, to play around with the numbers.
Yeah, but so, but, but our, our shopping centers are, are, are a more suburban type of development. Whether or not they're...
Yeah, and I think, and I think my point was that, you know, even 24 units an acre, it's, it's pretty suburban, which, you know, we've done that consciously. We didn't, we didn't come in here and approach what Northern Virginia considers medium density, which is, you know, 40 units an acre. Uh, we didn't, we didn't do that. I think there really is a question whether or not, uh, as some means of encouraging this, you should permit that to be between 12 and 24 by right. I mean, that was a question that came out of the working group, uh, and that, that's one that I think is very interesting. Um, but that's, that's not what's on the table today, but I think it's worth discussion.
Right. And I, I guess my only point there is that I, is that I think that as a group, we need to think about that carefully in terms of, um, how urbanized do we want this corridor to be? That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Let me find out where I was.
So can I just, I just want to ask one question, Mr. Pace?
Yes, sir.
So is the goal, as we're, and I'm going back to the area plans now, um, and I'm just thinking about Route Three, and I'm, I'm looking at, you know, here's where we have, um, we have Burlington and, and, um...
Big Lots.
Big Lots.
Right.
So when you, when you kind of look at what you want to do there, and going back to what Mr. Pace just asked about the 24 per acre, and looking at what you want to do with the setback, I'm just trying to look at the, the retail frontage requirements and how that could be divided up.
Well, let me, let me, I'm not sure, is your concern that buildings would be immediately up onto Route Three?
I am.
They would not be permitted to. Anything that fronts on Route Three would have to use this Route Three frontage. There would be a mandatory, so there would be this type of streetscape here, which is open with, uh, with taller automobile streetlights, with canopy trees, there would be a mandatory 15-foot landscape area here, uh, with canopy trees and other plantings. The building would be permitted to be between 15 and 80 feet from the right-of-way. So it could be as close as 15, or as far back as 80. Uh, so we're not mandating a very close frontage there.
But is that, but I, I guess I'm just trying to look at it as I'm thinking about, you know, transitional, you know, I mean, I know I, I went along and understood where we were going with the area plans, but based off what you just said, so, you know, the BP gas station, the Shell gas station, the Diners Inn, the Cookout, the bank, all that stuff gets wiped out in order to make that happen. Is it, so that means that all that smaller retail has to come out to do what you just said?
Not necessarily. Um, well, you only would, I'm trying to answer...
Because if you, because if you start with, I'm, I'm just trying to envision what you've presented right now.
Yes, sir.
And make sure I'm clear when you... And make sure I'm clear, when you start talking about, here's the blocks. Here's the access, and then we get into your frontages, how does that layer out?
That's a good question. Let me see if I can help. So regardless of where you put your residential on this site, you have to comply with the standards. But you do not have to build up to Route 3. You don't have to build the blocks that look like this. You could take this corner here, back here, and put residential uses there. Just redevelop that portion and do residential uses there. You'd have to build a street. You would have to build a secondary street frontage so the area between the building and the center line of the, the new street that you built in front of your buildings would look like this. This is what it would look like. You would have parallel-on-street parking. You'd have a utility strip with 10 to 16-foot lights in it. You'd have canopy trees. Your building would be in this general area here, which is...
Okay, I don't, I don't want to belabor this, because I'm just trying to envision. So you know the two streets that are there. So here's Big Lots. And then here's Battery Plus. Here's the SunTrust Building, and there's Westwood, and you come across, and there's a cemetery.
Yes.
And then on the other end, you've got, here's the McDonald's, and they're just, where the fire station is, right there.
Yes, sir.
So technically, you would have to put a street, I would think, coming across that way to, for access and to basically transition that area.
You would have to build streets internal to your site, yes, sir.
Okay.
But I, you mentioned a building that I think is illustrative here. If you think about that Long and Foster Building.
Yep.
And the way it's landscaped down to Route 3, that's basically what you would, you would be required to do if you introduced residential uses along Route 3. That's a similar character to what is required. That's currently not required. But good, you put parking lots up there and have a little 10-foot strip and go about your day. We would require that type of frontage, that Long and Foster Building, I think is a very good example, only if you do residential uses and only if it's along Route 3.
Okay. I mean, I just, I'm just trying to visualize as you start talking block sex, access, here's what the frontage has got to look like, and you start looking at what we have now, and then how does that transform?
Yes, sir.
And, Mr. Gant, I was on the working group that looked at this, and I think one of the major challenges that this has is that, you know, given the right collection of properties, you can lay something out that meets this. But when you look at many of these corridors and potential properties, you have multiple small pieces that are not owned and controlled by the same entities, that are cutouts, carve-outs. So, you know, I, I like the tools and I like this concept, but I think we're likely, if this goes through, and we do see these uses, a fairly significant number of, you know, modifications requests that may come in that, you know, they may not be able to meet all of these standards because of those circumstances. They, they may, but I think there's some challenges that, from a development standpoint and meeting these standards, when, you know, it's, you're not starting with a, in most cases, or you're not going to start with a clean square block where you're knocking down one building, and it may not be economical to acquire additional properties and, and do a development. So it's going to have some challenges, I think, but I think it's a good framework to look at the redevelopment of the corridor.
And, and Chris is making some good points. So, talk about the development review team that we put together. A group of local engineers, some development folks from the area. And then we met with them to make sure that we could all collectively read what we've put down here, and that it was mutually understandable, and it, and we got it there. Then we hired a guy named Bill McElie, who is the city attorney for Virginia Beach. When they developed and implemented their first form-based code, Virginia Beach is one of the most successful in the state. There have been some other problem children that we've studied as well. And what he encouraged us to do was the optional forms of development, which I haven't gotten delved into details on yet. And I will if you guys want me to, but in the interest of time, maybe we don't need to. But they provide some scenarios, like Chris is saying. We know what the intent is. We want to have a nice landscaped area along Route 3. We don't want buildings jammed up on there. And if, if we've done something, if the building transparency isn't right or something, they can, they can do better architectural treatment or something, you know. So if there is an engineering challenge to putting in the streetscape exactly as shown on this graphic here, there's, they can, they can work with Public Works and make it work as long as the intent is the same. And the other thing Mr. McElie told us that we should be aware of is that these codes do get revisited after they're worked on over time, and that you should expect that. No, these, these are, these set out a real vision, more so than any code that we have currently. We have small pieces of this in our code now. This is the first time we've done this here, and it won't be the last. But I do appreciate what you said, Chris, about the, where we got with it, and, and we feel confident enough about it before bringing it forward, so.
I guess the, the complexity is, you know, we, we start talking about this, and Mr. Pates said it best, I mean, it is complicated. But it's, and it's, and then when you take in what Mr. Hornick just said, I'm just trying to envision as I look around the city and I start now, and I, I do admit now, trying to envision how these overlays come in when you look at what is currently there and that transformation or that transition. I mean, it, you know, it could be, you know, even more interesting than just, you got, you know, 45 here, or 50 here, 65 there, you got 20 here. I mean, it, it could be, you know, what's, what's that back off from the street? I mean, you know, so...
And, and Mr. O'Toole, to your point earlier about the difference in height, in that transitional zone where we think it's really paramount, that transitional zone where residential uses are adjacent, you cannot put a four-story, five-story building back there in this transitional zone. So you mentioned different areas and height levels, and that made me think of that. I want to make sure I say that. On the rest of the site, as you design your site, if you have buildings of varying height, okay, that's, that's one thing. But here, where there are individual property owners who own their house in Altoona or something like that, there is not permitted to be that variation.
Thank you.
Plus you have the transitional requirement, buffer requirement.
Yes, sir. Well, I, I think we've gone kind of all over on this thing. I do want to talk about the uses. There are some changes proposed in the uses. Residential is all permitted, but some of the good ancillary uses, some of the senior housing options, like nursing homes are currently not permitted, continuing care retirement communities aren't permitted, parks aren't permitted. So we did community centers. We went ahead and made those part of the zoning district, proposed to be part of the zoning district. This is not the last step. If you remember in the area plan, one of the implementation steps is to change Commercial Shopping Center to Commercial Highway in this corridor to kind of phase out Commercial Shopping Center. They're redundant zoning districts, and having two of them, you know, it's, it's, we're trying to clean up our zoning code and make it more clean and efficient and straightforward, and that's, that's one of the steps. So we would need to do that final step as well. So I'm happy to take any more questions you guys have. I do understand that this is a lot here. I do appreciate Chris's time and the, the rest of the group. It was Legacy Engineering, Fairbanks and Franklin. The Web and Associates group was there, and I'm probably forgetting some other folks that participated in our group that were extremely helpful in developing this, as well as the City Attorney's Office.
Oh, Mike, this, this is Jim. I, I, one question I had is that we've been talking about all this in terms of Route 3. But, but this ordinance, if we adopted it tomorrow, would apply citywide to all properties currently zoned highway, commercial, is it, is it just highway commercial or is it highway shopping center too?
It, it's only in highway commercial. It's only in areas designated T-5C. It would not apply anywhere other than Area 3, which has that transect adopted as part of a small area plan.
I see, but, but you would envision the same ordinance applying to the rest of the city, wouldn't you? You wouldn't have different zoning ordinances for different areas?
We, we want to create through the area plan sets of policy toolkits that can be applied to the challenges that occur in several different areas in the city. And let me show you this map here. Where, oh, you can't see this, Mr. Pates, sorry about that. But, but the Weiss Shopping Center in Area 6, very similar situation. It's, it's doing okay. But as development, you know, as, as we continue to grow, we don't have raw land. The uses that it was designed and built for, for better or for worse, are evolving. And they aren't occupying the same type of building, and that center is going to evolve. So that was another area that was designated T-5, or that is proposed to be designated T-5C, where then if you adopted that and this ordinance got adopted, this would apply there as well. But until you go through that step, and, and we want to design similar toolkits for, for areas like Prince of San and, and Lower Lafayette in places that have the same type of challenges. We don't want to start doing very grainy, hard-to-understand, individualistic plans for each block and, and intersection in the city. We want to come up with comprehensive strategies that we can all identify and, and get behind and move forward with to, to address the issues that kind of occur in cities.
But I guess, I guess my point is, though, is that if this were adopted and applied to your transects that are, that are currently in place, or, which is just one area, right, for the moment. But then, as we move along and do the rest of the small area plans, anything that was still classified as highway commercial and that we thought was appropriate for highway commercial, this ordinance would apply, right, throughout the city?
Only if you designate it with that T-5C policy toolkit. And there's, there's one other area that we know that looks like that's, that should be the case. It's, it's designated in the Area 6 Plan. And I've got a good overview map of the city here, Mr. Pates, and I'll make sure I forward you this presentation so you can see what we're looking at tonight. I apologize for not doing it in advance. There aren't that many other areas where this would apply. And that's why I wanted to make sure that we showed you guys that. As we talk about Prince of San corridor, yeah, a lot of lessons learned there. We're going to do over again in Lafayette to some extent. But there's these similar types of areas, and it's hard when you're talking about these policies to, to understand their limits, that we're not creating a line of apartment buildings from the interstate exit to the Chatham Bridge or to the, the bridge to Stafford along Route 3. That's not the case. This is a redevelopment strategy for areas that are zoned, Commercial Highway, that have certain characteristics that we as a group will collectively designate T-5C, and it's limited. It's relatively limited. This is one area, and then the US Route 1 area north of the canal is another interesting area.
But, but basically, this ordinance you're envisioning even now as applying to the highway commercial land in Area 6?
Where it's designated T-5C, and if that gets adopted, yes, that would be, that, that is the policy toolkit. Yep, we're, we, yep.
Can I, I just make a point. Is there anything that would prohibit somebody from today, other than the additional bonus credit, from building exactly what you're proposing here in the CH?
Uh, no, they could do it today. I mean, it's...
So are we, we're not, we're not granting additional rights through this? We have a toolkit, and we're actually limiting someone's ability to build that in another form, other than what you're proposing?
Yeah, yeah, this is, this is more, a more regulatory approach than what currently exists.
So it's, it's not as though we're giving something away, other than if, if the city decides on a conditional use permit basis that a higher density is, is warranted or desired.
Well, like, then today, let's, let's just take something like your, your height limit, that in, in, in CH today, are you able to go to 65 feet by special permit?
No, but that, again, that's special use permit.
But, but you're not able to do that today, right?
No, sir. 50, 50 stories. I mean, 50 feet.
So, so Chris, that, that's my point, is, is that there are some things that are, you know, relaxing the requirements, and in other ways, it's increasing the requirements, right?
Yeah, but to my point, it's only, the relaxing you're talking about is only if someone comes in with a special use permit. That, that was the point I was trying to make, that, that in its by-right form, you're actually reducing what someone would be allowed to do as, on a by-rate basis without, with this proposal, other than coming in with a special use permit, or conditional use permit?
Well, but, but, but no, that, that this would allow some uses by right that are not allowed by right today in CH.
Some of the changes that you were talking about?
It's a mixed bag, isn't it? It's a mixed bag, that some things are looser and some things are stricter.
Yeah, yeah, nursing homes, community centers, continuing care, retirement communities, yes, sir.
Right, right. That's, that's my only point.
Final, final thing I think I, I should say, we were asked about, what does this mean in terms of taxes? What if everything in CH would redevelop as residential? This is a big concern for the city. This is non-scientific, but I took three developments when I was looking at this to, to take a look. The Burlington Coat Factory was built in 1979. It's currently assessed at $546,000 an acre for property taxes. The residences at Belmont, 1987, along Cowan Boulevard, $1.5 million an acre. It's three times the assessed value of the Burlington Coat Factory Shopping Center. The Seasons in Celebrate, Virginia, built in 2013, $2.7 million an acre. So that's, what, four, five times the amount? So that was a, a concern that was brought up by the city council. I picked those three developments. I, I just picked Seasons at first, and then Burlington, the difference was so big that I went and double-checked what the 1987 residence at Belmont was, and that was still three times. So that's a final point.
Any other questions, commissioners? All right, this time we opened up the public hearing. Anyone that wants to come forward and comment on this particular topic. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing on this particular item. At this particular time, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, this, this is Jim. I, I would suggest, actually, on, on both this item and the next one, that the Planning Commission schedule a work session to go into this in, in greater detail. I don't think we're ready to take any kind of vote tonight.
Other comments? Thoughts? Even to Mr. Pates's, Pates's comments. And I guess I have a question first. There's no time sensitivity to this particular item?
You are required to act within a certain amount of time, and I think it's February 13th.
Yeah, that's what I just read.
Okay.
Yeah, given that we have some time on this, I've been involved in this a little bit longer in participating with the working group, and so I don't want to, you know, I, I'm fairly comfortable with the proposal. I do realize it's going to go through iterations over time. I think the very first person, group to come in with a proposal for this, to use this, is probably going to end up rewriting half of it. That's just in my honest opinion. I think we're going to have some, a proposed development that people may like some things about, that may cause us to, to reevaluate it, maybe not half of it, but portions of it. I'm okay with tabling this, and I'd make a motion to table it at least to our, our next meeting. I don't know if a work session, I'm not really sure if there are specific questions we want to go over, or if we can do that through a list of questions and, and comments like Mr. Pates did on one of our other items tonight, if that would be appropriate, or if we do need to get back together. But at, at a minimum, I do think it'd probably be a good idea for us, since we've gotten all this information, to table it to the next, the next meeting and continue our discussion then.
I would agree with that also, yeah. No hurry, but unless there's specifics, Mr. Craig did a great job of outlining what, what all this entails.
Look like you want to say something.
No, I was just going to say I'm ready to vote on it today if we do move forward, but if the will of the group is to table it till the next meeting, we can do that, too.
Okay. I think that what we're going to do with this item is we're going to table it to the next session. My only question would be the public hearing. Do we leave that closed, or do we kind of, because we're going to come back to talk about it, do we hold that open?
I think unless we're proposing some significant changes, I think we've advertised it. I mean, if we're not changing it, I don't...
Okay.
Know that we have to leave it open, but, I mean, it's...
So I would just ask for the commissioners to basically do what Mr. Pates has done with a couple of items. You know, email your questions, make sure all the commissioners are on it, so we're not, not repeating that. And then by the time we come to our next meeting, we should be better prepared or well-prepared to address this.
Then, I'll, I'll make a motion then that we table this till the next meeting?
Okay. Take a second?
Second.
All right. I don't think we need to vote on it. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Pates, you're good with that?
Aye, yes.
Thank you, sir. All right, moving on to the next item. UDO TA 2018-04, Blocks and Lots, Access and Parking. The City of Fredericksburg proposes to amend subsection 72-51.2, Blocks, subsection 72-52, Access, and subsection 72-53, Parking of the Unified Development Ordinance. And, Mr. Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Gant.
Thank you, Mr. Camp. A little bit of background on this item. As you all know, the council created a 2036 Vision Statement, Desired Future States, and they assigned 35 priorities to that. We adopted that as part of the comprehensive plan. But those priorities, and you'll see this in your annual report, they're really, they're really structuring our, our policy work. We're trying to be as responsive to that as we can be. And one of the tasks that was given was Priority 14, which is review and update the zoning ordinance, including examination of those ordinances that adversely affect the livability of neighborhoods. So what we, we, we're doing with that is when we go through these area plans, we're looking at, we keep a running list of issues that we have with our current zoning ordinance. And if you've been to TRC, Mr. O'Toole has been through a lot of these, Mr. Rodriguez comes through a lot of these, too. You see that, that in those meetings, people just don't read the ordinance the same way. It's fascinating, and, and, and after working in a year, in it for a year or two, you start to realize, okay, it's not just me. I'm not just a terrible person. This, these are, we need to work on it. It's a, it's a live document. So the, the issues that, what we want to do is as we go through the area plan, and these issues come up like, like urban fabric standards, which is really the focus of Area 3, we want to go ahead and work on the Article 5 and Article 8 standards that are associated with that. That's what you see before you today. We used the same review committee to look at these, too. Basically, some of the issues that have come out is there isn't clarity on whether or not, when you do residential multifamily development on a big lot, you're not subdividing anything, do blocks apply? This says yes, blocks apply, and that streets apply. Another issue is, is how lots front on things. It was unclear in the previous ordinance, people were reading it completely different ways on whether or not you could do a commercial driveway in front of a bunch of townhomes, and whether or not that had any standards at all. So we clarify that, yes, residential lots front on streets. But as we've gone through these residential applications, I'm getting into my presentation here, as we've gotten into these applications, this is Idowild, which is somewhat of a gold standard for us, for, for good neighborhood design. You see this green right here, that is technically illegal under the ordinance. You have to get a site plan exception. It's administrative, it's not such a high bar. But, you know, we get questioned about whether, why is this an exception? You guys have to comment on it. And the city council, when we were going through this and talking about the standards we're going to modify, said that, hey, you need to look at this, and whether or not this should just be a permitted thing. So we've included a provision that 20, a total of 25% of these lots can do this kind of thing, front on these green spaces. There's a bunch of examples of this in Idowild. Some of them, they're, they're accessed by alley only, and they kind of look out over the open space. There are some that front on kind of like playing fields, you know, so they've really done a creative look in Idowild. But Governors Row had some of their lots do this. Hamptons at Coleman, and the Highlander rezoning did, too. They implemented a system of courts. These are all very interesting ways, with our dwindling land supply, to get additional opportunities for homeownership. That was kind of what we were talking about with, with, with the Highlander rezoning, especially since it was in such proximity. It was within the area, the walk shed of the downtown. You could get 91 opportunities for homeownership where you could walk to the downtown. That's big. That's a lot. That's a great opportunity for the City of Fredericksburg, and that was one means by which they did that, was to implement kind of a courtyard, single-family home thing, which is pretty cool. So that's in there. That's the diagram there. Access needed to be cleared up. The, the access standards had a lot of standards about a lot of different, and tools that needed to just be kind of bulleted. There's streets, there's, which look like this, or like Route 1, with sidewalks, or Gateway Boulevard would be a good street example that we've all looked at recently. Then there's commercial driveways. Commercial driveways are a very valuable piece of infrastructure in our shopping centers. Central Park, this is the O'Charley, so DSW's over here, getting your shoes. I think this is probably McDonald's, something like that. That's a commercial driveway. We're not mandating that it be pedestrian-oriented. It's, you drive your car along that thing. That's what that is. And then there's an alley. And an alley, this is another picture of Idowild, provides secondary access. And in some cases, especially in infill in the downtown, people front houses on alleys. Well, I'm trying to think of an example. Riverview Townhomes is one, where recently, that we've all reviewed, where they have the houses at the front of the street, and then there's another level that front on the alley. But, but really, this is just about defining what an alley is. Our current alley standard requires the facility to be 24 foot wide. That is very wide. This, what you're looking at right here, is 20 foot wide from the edge of this curb, it's actually 19 foot, from the edge of that curb to the edge of that curb, 19 foot wide. That's the, that is the functional standard for the City of Fredericksburg that development seems to have gotten it right. So we're changing our standard, that wherever there's road access and an alley, the alley can be reduced with. We're reducing the amount of pavement that's required, and creating a better environment. The parking, the only thing we've done with parking, we were, we were relying somewhat on the commercial driveway standard, which is, again, this, this facility here, to dictate parking lot aisle widths. We didn't have a standard. The standard currently is make it safe for pedestrians and cars. That's a good thing in some ways, especially in a downtown like we've got, it's really hard to get a lot of, it's real, you know, you've got to plan for the pedestrian down here. But it was problematic. So we've, we've added in a table that has standard aisle widths, depending on the space. So we have added that standard to parking. That's the one parking standard. Other than, we needed to differentiate between single-family home driveways, now since we're just calling things a driveway, that's just a place where you park. So there's a lot there, but it is kind of broad overview. I'm happy to take any questions you guys have.
I, I got one. For, I guess, mixed use, is there requirements for handicap parking?
Yes, sir.
And what are those? Would that be in the same?
We, we, we haven't adjusted that number. Our, our ordinance relates to the Building Code, which requires, gosh, Renee, it's a percentage of the, of the total that's required. We rely on the Virginia Statewide Building Code.
Okay.
Over 50. Once you go over 50, you need to, minimum, yeah, you have to have these.
I'm just, I'm just wondering, because I see a lot of need for, for more handicap parking. I mean, this building, I know it's probably grandfathered in, but there's only one handicap parking spot on this block for, for this facility. And so I'm just wondering if we're updating different standards, and, because that might be something to look at as well.
Well, I tell you what, the best thing to do would be, we'll put it on the list, and, and with the, maybe with the next round or something, we just, we just haven't dove into it.
Sure, sure, sure.
So handicap parking.
Yeah, and if it's not in this specific section, that's fine, too.
Okay.
I get it.
Yeah.
But I, you know, I have a personal interest in looking at that.
Yes, sir.
But, yeah, thank you.
Question, other questions?
I'll just make a, a comment. Mike, as, and Chuck, as you know, I'm not a huge fan of the block standard application on multifamily product. I was involved in a project, as you know, I was conflicted, I didn't have any, but that, I didn't participate in that decision with the planning commission. But just looking back at that retroactively, and the application of a standardized grid block pattern to multifamily product throughout the city, I think there, the goal would be that as we have more, more of an urban environment, I do agree that blocks apply, but I also think there's still a place for multifamily product that's more than a campus-style setting. And I feel that the block requirements don't necessarily provide for a better product in a standalone multifamily product. I think it's great for a, an urban environment where you're in a mixed-use scenario. But I think if you look at examples of newer multifamily product, and you compare ones that were laid out on a block standard to those that were done in a campus setting, I would argue that, for me, I, I prefer the campus-style layout, and I think it's a, a better design, it provides more amenities, and it's just as walkable, if not more so than the, the one, the example we do have of one that was. So, you know, going forward, I think we talked about this, and I think the conversation was that there's not that many opportunities or pieces of land left for more of a campus-style multifamily. So it may not, it may be a moot point. But I still don't know that I necessarily would say that I would support globally across the board, that every, every piece of, of property throughout the city, based on topography, based on other things, necessarily should be laid out, or should be required to be laid out in the same block standard as, you know, a downtown or, or an Idowild.
Well, well, Chris, this is Jim. You know, that, that's an interesting point, but I wonder whether you could somehow, maybe not the word compromise, but to, to allow both, depending on the existing street pattern where something is being developed. I mean, the idea being that, that if you have a regular grid street pattern today around the site for a new project, then shouldn't that new project fit in with that existing grid? Now, if there are no streets around, and you're at the, you know, along the river or someplace where, you know, you're not going to have any kind of through traffic, then maybe it doesn't matter. So maybe, maybe it's a factor of the, the existing street pattern.
Yeah, I, I would tend to agree with that. I don't know how you codify that, and how you, how you, how you do that, but I, I would, I would tend to agree. I also, from a block standard, when you get into large commercial developments, sometimes, based on the type of building you've got, and, and individual uses, it's a challenge. And I've, I've talked with you, Mike, and with Marnie about those in the past, and I just think it's, it's tough to apply that to non, you know, the areas of the city that are not, like Jim said, already in that grid pattern, or, you know, may not have the uses that necessarily historically have, have been developed with that pattern.
Mike, what do you think of that? Do you think there's some way to sort of blend it?
Oh, yeah, let, let us look at that. That's an interesting thought.
Yeah.
And let us look at that, and we'll, we'll bring something back.
Any other questions? Any other questions from you, Mr. Bates?
No. Have you opened the public hearing yet?
I was about to do it right now, sir.
Oh, okay. I couldn't hear.
All right. At this time, we'll open the public hearing on this topic. Seeing no one approach the lectern, we'll close the public hearing. And the will of the commission at this point, I'll entertain a motion.
I think it's another one.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would move that we treat this like the previous item, and table it until our next meeting.
Is that a motion, sir?
Yes, sir.
I, I second that, with, with the comment that, I, I do think, short of the, the issue that Mr. Horning brought up, I do think that hopefully in December, we could wrap both of these up. I don't foresee anything coming down the pike, but we do have an opportunity to, in the next few weeks, to, to figure out if we're not addressing an issue. But, yeah, I think we should table this to the, to our next meeting.
All agreed?
Agreed, yes.
All right. We'll move us to our next meeting. Okay.
Yes, I, I on that motion.
Thank you, sir.
I think you got a, a motion and a second. I think we need a vote on that.
Oh, I, I thought you'd voted. It's so hard to hear on here.
Okay. I'm wondering your names.
Saw everybody's head nodding, and then I heard Mr. Bates say, yep, my eye is in there. Everybody good? Okay. All right, moving on to the next item, which is item number 6, Old Business. And we're at 6A, which is the Area 6 Small Area Plans. Mr. Johnston?
I think we have a sidebar at the moment.
Yeah. Sir? Well, this has you, your name on it.
Small Area Plan.
Small Area Plan.
Whole Business, Suzanne.
Ah, okay. Mr. Finn.
Hi there.
No.
So I think based on the great progress that we made at our discussion in October, the direction that we got from, from y'all was to focus on the implementation portion. And so the, the presentation that we've got tonight is literally item by item of the implementation. And so if I, could I have the computer, please? Thank you. So just as an example, just to explain the format to you, on the left, we'll have the implementation step. So if you're following along in your amendment, that'll be on the left, and then the relevant graphic or quote from the text will be on the right. Anything new since the last meeting will be highlighted in green, and is the same in the packet. So we'll just go through and address any questions or concerns about the implementation, if that sounds like a, a good plan to everyone.
It sounds fine.
Okay, great. So the first is really aimed about implementing the VDOT STARS program, which I think we've talked about. So in, throughout the plan, we illustrate this through the Access and Mobility Map. And then I've also brought the specifics of the two intersections studied on the VDOT STARS program. So it focuses on improving the, those two intersections, and, as well as including pedestrian equity across those intersections, encouraging more of a multimodal path, enhanced crossing to signals, sufficient timings, medians, and, and things like that. So, does anyone have any thoughts on, on that one, or, well, feeling in support of VDOT STARS? In also response to our, our comments, we've sort of adjusted our language a little bit. So rather than everything being 100%, we've been more realistic about things that we would pursue, or encourage, or continue to investigate. So, for example, we will pursue the conversion of the one-way streets, the Washington and the Fall Hill Avenue and Mari Street Block, rather than, you know, as we had it before, which was just, you know, convert. So, and now we're pursuing the conversion, which we are actively doing through studies, and then there's the, the reference to it in the text, which is on page 192. We're all okay with that one? Moving on. This next section in the implementation for infrastructure deals with the creation of development-friendly blocks. So we're saying allow the sections of streets to create more development-friendly blocks with a useful pattern of circulation, and to include Emirates Road, Freedom Lane, Race Street, and Elm Street. I'm sorry, I think I've, when I was typing this over, I may have accidentally deleted a word. But it's allow for the potential vacation of these streets to create these more development-friendly blocks. And then in the, in the text, we talk about how they, these vacations could be used as more of a comprehensive redevelopment strategy, creating more development-friendly blocks. And then these more neighborhood streets like Elm and Race could be used perhaps more internal streets to larger redevelopment scenarios. Sound good?
I just want to make sure, I remind everybody, as Ms. Finn is talking, she's kind of looking to see if anybody has anything for her.
I'm just going to keep moving until you...
To make this as interactive as possible.
Okay.
So I just want to make sure of that.
The next section of the implementation ma, matrix deals with regulations. And so the first says to establish a maker district, and that this would involve rezoning the area to a maker zoning, to merge the existing corridor design guidelines, creating the new form-based elements to support the vision of this district. And so the text for this is on the right here, and so you can see what's, what's new, what we've added since our last discussion. And the, the new text is just to illustrate that this really is part of a policy toolkit to foster the evolution of this corridor, that it's intended to complement downtown activities with incentives to preserve historic structures and natural features, while reducing barriers for both small-scale entrepreneurs and larger companies looking to start or expand businesses along the corridor. And then ultimately, this encourages more employment and apprenticeships in growing fields. So that's ultimately the goal of, of the Maker District.
Got a question?
Sure.
Maybe I forgot something, but I thought that we were creating in the comp plan the T-5M, and that that was a designation under the comp plan, but that the underlying zoning would still stay as C... Help me. What is, uh?
CH.
What, CH? So this says rezone the area to a making, maker zoning. Are we anticipating a new zoning district that will be created specifically for that?
At this point, yes. So both sides of Princess Anne Street are zoned CH. And so it's the question of, is, is that really the most appropriate zoning district for... so it's the question of, is that really the most appropriate zoning district for a street that directly butts neighborhoods?
So the discussion that we've had with comments on this area about the change in the comprehensive plans recommending the makers, and, you know, do we have the right area? And is this, do we have the right mix, so forth, would be addressed in the creation of that zoning? So to lead to the next point, you know, one of the concerns was by voting on the small area plan and requesting that it be adopted into the comp plan, that we were kind of creating through that text what the maker district was and what the provisions were, but there wasn't really a whole lot of specificity on that. But that's next stage will be where some of the issues that have been brought up by citizens and others about how the makers district is made compatible and what are the uses would be addressed with that actual ordinance.
And that's the reason why we need the specific zoning district. If it were to stay CH, some of the uses that we would anticipate encouraging in this district would not be allowed. And similarly, some of the things that we would want in CH may not be appropriate on Princess Anne Street. So it is a new zoning district, and we anticipate that with that new zoning district will come form-based rules so that we have appropriate transitions to the neighborhoods and really guide the development that we want to see there. So yes, there will be much more discussion to come.
This is Jim. My question there is, you know, given our discussion this evening about the new text for the CH district, and the fact that I believe virtually all of the CH property that's in Area Six is envisioned to be changed to the maker, the T-4M and the T-5M, isn't that correct? So that there would be virtually no CH zoning left in Area Six? Is that right?
It would remain CH zoning until we were to rezone it.
Right, right. But I mean, under your plan, you're envisioning that that would change?
Yes. So that these form-based rules would not apply on Princess Anne Street. We would have to create new rules for it. But the rules, as Mike just went over, for the new form-based code for CH would apply if we were to apply the T-5C designation to the shopping centers along Route One. That is an area where we would imagine CH zoning and a T-5C designation, therefore prompting these new rules.
Right. So I think it's kind of useful that we have this zoning ordinance now in front of us. So when you put that together with the area plan for Six, you get a pretty good idea, I think, of what it would all look like. Now, would the T-4M be, for those areas and, for those properties in Area Six that are currently CH, and they are shown on the plan as being the T-4M, would they be, would, they would be changed to this new CH, right?
No.
No.
The T-4M and the T-5M would both be changed to a new maker zoning district, which would be very similar, but respect the fact that one side of the street could handle a different kind of development than the other side that butts the single-family neighborhood. They would not be applied to the new CH zoning, because they are not a T-5C.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Right. But you're envisioning that in Area Six, there will be no traditional CH properties, correct?
No. We are imagining traditional CH zoning properties, and that would be the T-5C areas, which is the...
No, but they wouldn't be, they would no longer have the CH designation, right? Because there'd be a new district, and they would be changed to this new maker district zoning.
Mr. Pates, you missed my great map. The problem areas, the problem areas that we have in terms of our existing zoning are a lot of CH. What we're talking about with T-4 and T-5M, or whatever the last digit on that is, I or something else innovative, is a strategy. So currently, commercial highway zoning in that corridor requires such large development. The setbacks are big. The parking orientation is incompatible with Princess Anne Street. We have to have an overlay zoning district, a Princess Anne corridor overlay, to then try to make it pedestrian-oriented to fit in. That conflict needs to be resolved, and that's the focus of a zoning change. And that was the origination of this tool. So, yes, it would be different.
I'm not complaining about it, but it seems to me that, from what I understand, the properties that are currently zoned CH in Area Six will no longer be CH.
So the shopping center across from James Monroe High School would, with the Ys and the Taco Bell and the place where I get all my takeout, would remain CH, and that is a T-5C, as would across the Fall Hill there with the barbecue place, and then the block immediately across from that that I can't remember any landmarks of. Those three blocks, essentially at the intersection of Fall Hill and Route One with James Monroe High School, those three blocks, that intersection, would remain CH and a T-5C as we traditionally know it.
Okay, thank you. That's very helpful.
Okay, good.
I just had a question for, I guess, clarification. So I see maker district in lowercase. I see it in uppercase. And then I see maker transx zone. And I'm just trying to figure out, so with this language, are we officially adopting the term maker district? I know there was discussion about that, and even at the community sessions, there were several people that weren't necessarily on board with using the term maker district.
It does seem to be a point of discussion for many things, for sure. It is sort of becoming the, just simply because it is so new, but it is becoming sort of what is the standard accepted term for these sorts of things. So APA has put out guidance that talks about maker districts, and people refer to things as maker labs. And so it is a recognized term. We've done our best to explain what exactly that means in the text, to talk about that it runs the full gamut of small-scale production to software engineering, to kind of flesh that out. But as of right now, maker as a name seems to be tied to a larger recognition of this kind of program. But if you have something better, we can talk about it.
If you want to add additional terms, you know, that's always helpful. But maker's becoming sort of a market phrase, if you will, a technical term in continuity in terms of comparison with other jurisdictions. And if you have more to it, that's fine.
Right. I mean, I know, like, when we did the community session at the community center with the residents and the community input, you know, people, some people had suggested something like the Old Mill Maker District. There were some other titles that were thrown about. I don't think the commission has seen that.
We don't want to create the adjective. I mean, this is not branding, if you will, this neighborhood. This is not intended to, first-named, if you will. It's simply the generic concept of a maker district as opposed to a commercial district, or an industrial district, or residential district. The maker district has become a concept in, that's a combination of all those things. So we specifically have stayed away from, quote, the brand of the corridor. That's who we determine as the support.
I'd contend that you've already labeled it maker district as a brand.
Well, maker is not a brand term. Maker is, as I said, a brand would be something that you need. And this is not a unique district. There are dozens of communities within 200 miles of Fredericksburg that use the term maker in a broad, generic sense. So when I think of brand, I'm thinking something that you need and specific and calls out a particular area as opposed to a broad conceptual term, which is what maker's become. Now, if it's an additional creative district, or innovation district, or some other adjective terms, that, you know, that could be helpful. I don't think that's a problem at all. But the term maker, I think, has some...
Okay, thank you.
Just to share, just to remind everyone, we've been having these almost monthly meetings with interested residents and potential business owners who are interested in this concept on the corridor. And they went through a naming exercise at our last meeting, and their title right now is Canal Quarter, a Maker Community. So they recognized, and they were very adamant about wanting to maintain the name maker as part of the identity, but also wanting to recognize that it is larger than that, and really thinking that the canal brought a certain geographic identity to it. So, you know, the group that we are advocating for and we are working with, that would really be the folks to get this thing up and going and off the ground, are thinking along the same lines as you.
And if I could, Mr. Chairman, I realize the public hearing is closed, but we have two representatives from the regional library that are very much, I think, proud to provide the maker district. Like, with the ability to speak, if you wish to recognize, they would appreciate it at some point.
Okay, that sounds great. Ladies, please.
Thank you very much, Chuck. Good evening, everyone. My name is Martha Hutzle, and I am the library director of the Central Rapid Regional Library System. I apologize, I have a bad cold. I live at 1105 Walker Drive in the Idlewild subdivision. Excuse me. I'm here to express support for a maker district in the city of Fredericksburg and to share ideas for a possible role for the library. We really want to be part of this creative idea. We do refer to them as maker labs in our spaces, and so do most of the schools. So it is kind of a common term. The library began offering maker and STEM opportunities in 2011 and opened our first maker lab in 2013. We currently have four maker labs in our branches, including the Fredericksburg branch. We currently offer 3D printers and scanners, drawing tablets, sewing machines, other STEM and tech devices. Customers can get trained and then earn badges on all of this equipment, allowing them to use it independently on their own projects. We are working towards opening a digital media lab within the next nine months. All of this and our highly skilled, talented, and creative staff makes the library the ideal partner for a dedicated maker space in the city's future maker district. We do have staff attending the monthly meetings that Chuck and Mike referred to earlier. Kearl is interested in partnering to establish a dedicated maker or digital media lab within the maker district with the purpose of empowering the community by providing free access to powerful creative hardware. A single dedicated location is more efficient for the library and for training tomorrow's workforce for the 21st century technology. And as we are already discovering with our new mall branch, we do have a branch at the Spots Avenue Mall. Libraries are a destination and will draw the public. A library-run maker lab in the maker district would be an anchor that will draw not only the public but other businesses as well. Kearl also has a long list of partners that we would draw on to increase the offerings and opportunities that we could provide to the community. Examples of what we'd like to offer include a recording and video editing studio, drawing tablets, laser cutters, and 3D printing services. We'd also like to offer hardware that could be checked out, such as GoPros and cameras and portable drawing tablets. A separate maker lab within the quarter will also positively impact the Fredericksburg branch. We would be able to turn our current maker space into much-needed meeting room. This will be especially important once our two current meeting rooms are removed next fall to make an expanded public theater space. That program is already approved by the city. Moving the maker lab outside of the branch would allow us to create a green room and dressing rooms for theater productions. Those are the rooms that we currently use for our maker spaces. There are many libraries around the country that operate separate maker labs outside their current buildings, and we already have staff and equipment and are ready to help you reach your goals. So we have the training, we have the equipment. We're looking for a space.
Any questions from commissioners?
Thank you very much.
So, Mr. Pates, were you about to ask a question?
Well, yeah, I wanted to ask something about, you know, whether, I don't know whether Suzanne had finished going through the changes or not, but I had a question about a change that's been made on page 186. Because I can't see your old chart that you're referring to. But have you gotten to that point yet, Suzanne?
I don't think we've referenced anything on 186 yet. No.
Okay. Well, when you get to it, I have a question. No need to jump ahead.
Okay. Any more thoughts on this implementation strategy?
Thank you, Ms. Hutzle.
This is a sort of completely reworked implementation strategy based off of our discussion to explore incentive programs to improve the creation and expansion of creative businesses within Area Six, including targeted building acquisition, SOD grants, small business loans, and the expansion of the Arts and Cultural District. This relates to the text on page 188, where we talk about encouraging this evolution and pretty much, you know, exactly lists those incentives. We feel that, you know, this is not an all-encompassing list, but represents the kinds of things that might be needed to really encourage and guide this evolution. We then specifically call out the Transfer Development Rights Program, recognizing that we first need to develop it. So that would be our next step, is to really get into the details of that. This program really came about as a way to respond to the development pressures that may be faced by the character-defining structures that are in this area. You know, the preservation of these structures, as we say on page 188, will be encouraged by the transfer of development rights, as well as sightline setbacks and allow the development to occur in appropriate locations while ensuring the continued preservation of these structures. So we see this as just one of the tools, but wanting to specifically call it out here as something that will need to be specifically developed. Any thoughts on that one?
The only question I have, oh, you're getting ready to get to it.
I brought the map, in case we needed the map.
So from what I understand, in order to have this in our comprehensive plan, we have to include a map identifying those areas?
We need to identify sending and receiving areas, yes.
So I guess the question I have, there's been a lot of debate about the TDR, not certain what it's going to be, what it's going to look like, where is it going to go. The need right now to include that in the comp plan versus adding it later if we're going to have this discussion later about creating it, I guess I'm just asking about the timing of that. And do we need, I understand we have to have the map if it's in there, but do we need at this point to have the TDR in there, or can it all be revisited at one time?
I think it would be better for us to focus on the ordinance which we give to the specific, but it does not have to revisit the comprehensive plan. If we can add, if the TDR program is adopted, these would be the sending and receiving areas. But I hesitate to adopt the plan as immediately we adopt it. And I think it's helpful right from the get-go saying that this, these would be the...
Well, this is a little bit confusing to me, because it looks like the sending and receiving areas are fairly close in size, but there's a 120-acre discrepancy between sending and receiving. Can you explain that? It's, one's 30 acres, the other's 150, and they kind of, it looks like the sending is only, is 75% of the receiving.
That is correct, because the sending areas and the, I should have perhaps called this text out, but the sending areas only apply to parcels that contain a character-defining contributing structure. So it's not the entire swath of what's been hatched in blue, but for example, if we're talking about cars, it's the parcel that contains cars. So the total accumulation of the acreage of those parcels that contain contributing character-defining structures is 30 acres. We had a lot of internal debate about this, of do we put that condition of, you know, a contributing, a parcel that contains a contributing structure within this area? Or are we specifically drawing only those parcels at this time, knowing that boundaries may change and then things like this? So that's how we left it at this moment.
And just for clarification, too, that ARB is the one who decided what the contributing structures were?
Yes. So we worked pretty extensively with Kate Schwartz before she left us. Just, I'm kidding, she's fine. She'll come back. Before she left us to do an assessment of these structures, to figure out which structures... Before she left us to do an assessment of these structures, to figure out which structures fit a period of significance for the corridor, for the region, and for the area, and that was determined to be that kind of mid-century Route One bypass kind of theme. We figured out which ones still had a high degree of integrity and therefore cohesively formed a unified district. We took that to the ARB, who pretty much concurred with our designations and formally supported them. They did add two other structures that weren't part of what we're designating as part of the Maker District areas, so we've noted them as an additional note under the Historic Resources section, which is on page 191, and that's your green text there, just to note that they're recognized as also being part of this era, but are not considered part of the contributing structures. But yes, the ARB has formally blessed these.
I think, Mr. Chairman, we were just having a little bit of a mess, because even I was getting confused here. I think it would be helpful if the map, maybe we modified it so that, so that the parcels that contain the contributing structures is what is specifically highlighted is the blue, which is 30 acres. I think we can clear that up a little bit.
Just a question for, maybe it was before my time, but did we ever submit any recommendations for contributing structures from the Planning Commission?
I don't recall.
I do know that we've discussed the list several times. I don't know that, I guess that's what you would be doing as part of this, is formally endorsing that list. So if you wanted the property-by-property list that's on the Historic Resources section, or no, it's at the bottom of the map on page 189, the list of contributing structures there, so I guess that would be, that would be part of this process. If you think there's something missing and, you know, we need to include it, we can talk about it.
This is Jim, I just sort of have a question. I wonder whether it's wise to use the term contributing structures, because that term is used in connection with the historic district. This is not a historic district, and the draft plan, I believe, just refers to these as historic resources, right? And so some of these historic, I mean, historic resources are in the sending and receiving areas, and the two new ones are not, is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so I'm not sure, to sort of go to Renee's question, I don't think these two new ones, it's very significant one way or the other. I think the plan is just recognizing that these are older buildings that are historically, you know, interesting, but I don't think that any of this has any real, you know, impact.
Essentially, what we've done is recognize them as part of our local inventory of historic structures.
Right.
Right.
And that's all it is.
Right. There is a long-term goal for our department to do a national registered district nomination for this area, which would be a national registered district, not a local overlay kind of ARB district. But so in that way, they could become contributing structures, but, you know, yes, there is a certain connotation with them being contributing structures, and we can, you know, tweak that language to perhaps reflect just character-defining structures or something similar.
Right.
If it continues to cost.
Is that helpful, Renee?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, cool.
Do you want to talk about tweaking the map, or do you want to leave it at that? Did you want to make a point? Okay. So if we keep moving down the list, the next regulatory implementation recommendation is to establish a program to incentivize the creation of affordable housing units. This is something that we kept hearing through all of the neighborhood meetings and we thought was really important. So on page 188, in a discussion of housing, it says residential demand and redevelopment presents an opportunity to expand the supply of affordable housing through incentives, building upon the heritage of the area as affordable neighborhoods for the city's workforce. But housing should retain a balance with commercial uses in the district. So hopefully that summarizes that really well. I know that there is always a trick when you say the word affordable about what that actually means, so I just wanted to give you sort of a preview about what we're actually talking about here. So I've brought this chart, and so to zoom out a couple thousand feet here, we're part of the Washington DC MSA. So whenever we are talking about affordable housing and existing programs, all of our programs are going to be tied to the median income of the Washington DC MSA. So we see this as an opportunity, if we're creating a local program, where the MSA might encourage 80 to 120, 80 to 120% of AMI to incentivize a lower percentage of AMI, but that is the AMI of the Washington DC MSA, and this lower percentage actually just reflects the income of our typical local workforce. And so on the chart here, we've got the 30% of AMI and the 50% of AMI. What is the standard accepted rate for an affordable housing unit, should it meet those standards and be affordable to that AMI for studio, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom? And then I've also put in there an approximate income based on household size about what we're talking about for those incomes, and then at the bottom, just for your reference, what is considered a fair market rent for that unit. So just for your benefit, Mr. Pates, we'll go through a two-bedroom apartment. At 30% of AMI, that's about $800 a month, with the approximate income of $28,000 to $35,000. 50% of AMI, that would be $1,300 a month, with an approximate income of $47,000 to $60,000. And that a fair market rent for a two-bedroom unit would be $1,800. So that's where the direction we're going with the affordable housing. We're also talking about in a redevelopment scenario that uses this incentive, that if it were to include a mix of apartments or townhomes or single-family detached homes, that if they were to take that incentive, the affordable housing units must be evenly distributed across all housing types. So you couldn't just make the apartments affordable. If you're doing the incentive.
Excuse me, this is Jim, I was just having a question. So what you're referring to and reading from, you're not talking about an amendment to the area plan, are you? What's the document that you're reading from?
I'm reading just a chart that I've created based on standard accepted rates and incomes for our area. That is a preview of the direction that we may take and a program that would incentivize the creation of affordable housing units. These are not specifics that are going in the plan. The most specific the plan goes is establish this program, and then I'm just trying to talk about what that might actually look like.
But you're not talking about amendments to the area plan that we have under consideration, right?
No, I'm not getting anything near the specific in the amendments. Just wanted to, you know, better define the term.
Thank you.
Okay. Does all that make sense at this point? Okay, awesome. Any questions on that one? No? Yes? Awesome. Then we'll move on. Another regulation is to rezone publicly held land, either C Civic or T1 to a Pro's zoning district, so I've included the map here about what areas those may be, and that's just to more accurately reflect our zoning, should our parks be residential zoning, or should they be some sort of park setting? So that's what we're talking about there. The next is to simplify zoning regulations for more compatibility between zoning districts and to ensure uses are compatible with existing patterns within neighborhoods. This would involve reassigning residential zoning districts to be more consistent with the pattern of development. So to discuss this, I've brought a map here, which shows the residential blocks as we're designating them as T3 and T3E, and I've put here the existing density on the ground. So when we talk about the differences between the T3 and the T3E neighborhoods, the T3Es are pretty much the more shades of green areas, and the T3 neighborhoods are the more shades of blue. And as you can see, we get eight to 16 units an acre in those areas. So when we talk about an R8 zoning district as a potential change, really it's just bringing more accuracy to what our zoning is and allowing for infill to be more compatible. And that's the goal there. Two big bits of text that I want to tie into this conversation is the definition of the T3 areas, just how they are small lots, single-family detached housing. These neighborhoods are well-established and walkable, and future infill should reflect this character with homes of a similar scale and form, so very aware of that. And then something new that we've added since our last discussion, which we've added as a response to continued conversation with the neighborhoods. They had some concerns about neighborhood quality and control and preserving their status there, so to further preserve the character, the neighborhood may request to work with the city on a comprehensive property maintenance review program, and the city should consider refunding and applying the rental inspection program in this area to address housing quality. As well, in this bit of residential zoning toolkit goes the pattern books, the conservation districts, to formalize this kind of control. Any questions on that?
No, I was just going to make a comment, maybe reinstate versus refunding? Because that, I don't know, maybe for me, that has a different meaning.
I read refunding earlier today, it was like a refund.
That confused me, I thought we were getting money back.
You write off that.
Reinstate. Well.
Re-institute.
Re-institute would be.
It's still, we're still like allowed to do it, but we're not funded, so we'll find the right one that isn't a refund.
What about our budget hockey? Any ideas?
Just say funding.
Okay.
Consider funding.
There you go, fund.
Thank you, Deidre.
Well, Suzanne, I do have a problem with this change, it's on page 186. We have not really had any discussion about the rental housing program. It was instituted by the city, and then it was repealed, and the council did that several years ago, and I don't think it's appropriate for the Planning Commission, in this document, to be endorsing and re-establishing a program that council has abolished. And so I don't know at the appropriate time, I would make a motion that this be struck.
Jim, I don't think, my understanding, council did not delete the program, they just, primarily because of budgetary reasons amongst anything else, they just terminated the person, well, didn't terminate him, but they stopped funding his position.
Well, that's maybe technically how it was done, but it was my understanding at the time that they essentially abandoned the program for whatever you want to call it.
Well, I believe the program is still on the books, so, but nevertheless, going to the larger issue of whether this document should address that, I hear what you're saying. I guess that should be open for discussion. I guess other commissioners have thoughts on that.
Just to state this, these two changes came, we went on a tour of the neighborhood with one of the members of the Fall Hill neighborhood, who had a lot of interesting things to say, and the housing quality were two issues that she brought up, that she felt like could be addressed, and so that's, these were the two tools we identified to be able to do that, so just to put that out there.
I would just say, I'm supportive of it, because I've seen many, many rental properties in town that are not properly maintained, and I know it's a very lengthy process to go through the courts when we have to enforce some of those things, but if encouraging the city to reallocate funding for that, I'm 100% supportive of it.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I don't know whether this is an appropriate time to make a motion or not.
I guess the first question I have, so Ms. Finn, how much more do you have to provide at this point?
So let's see. So we're going through them, bird by bird, that's the phrase. We are nearly there. We are nearly there. We've got four more, five.
Okay, so Mr. Pates, how about if we finish off what Ms. Finn has to present, and then entertain a motion?
Sure, that's fine, thank you.
Yes, sir.
The next regulatory implementation step is to rezone commercial shopping center to commercial highway. Hopefully, we understand the power of that, so we'll move on. The next is to implement the Chesapeake Bay TMDL Plan. You putting this language in here allows us to spend money to implement this plan, so it's sort of a regulation that we've got to do, but has great environmental benefits Now we're on to the third section of the implementation matrix, which deals with public facilities. The first is to improve the entry sequence from Route One, southbound from Route One and Princess Anne Street, talks about gateway improvements, wayfinding, welcome signage, branding, and potential opportunities to repurpose the kitchen dependency into some sort of entry feature that may serve the community. Completely sort of reworked implementation here is evaluating a targeted streetscape program to include streetlights, pedestrian improvements, and street trees within nodes, while gateway elements along corridors will provide an improved entry experience. So we're relating this to the discussion of third spaces, nodes and corridors, and the third spaces that tie them together, which is discussed as part of the Maker District. And I've got the map, which I've updated into a more vibrant color since last we spoke as well. The text there has been updated to say that these areas should not be mandated, but rather encouraged as a means to generate the type of unifying nodes, as they could potentially evolve out of their existing things. So it's not to hopefully lessen the language or concerns that it appears in any way to be some sort of mandate, but just describes them as a potential opportunity. We feel more comfortable with that, that's great.
I have one comment on that. Jim had in his comments something about, you know, distance to public areas, or, you know, public pocket parks, those kinds of things. I think the response was that, you know, we should look into that. Have you all been able to incorporate that anywhere in here at this point, or where are we saying? I thought it was a good idea to try to look at that. I don't know if we have enough information at this point to make that a comp plan requirement, but I did, I did think it was a good idea to try to have that as a guideline.
I have not personally had the time to look in what exactly that number is. We're talking about like certain walksheds or certain times to significant green spaces. Yes, it is a good idea, and I haven't just, we can keep looking into them.
Okay, yeah, I like that.
Okay.
Chris, that is addressed in Amendment Number Seven that I circulated, so we can maybe talk about that later when we get to those amendments.
Okay.
Excellent. And this is the last one, to maintain and enhance view corridors between the Rapid River, emphasizing the connection between the neighborhood and the river with improved pedestrian connections. And it just talks about some places where there are improved, preferred crossings for the river to get people to the trail safer, and those sorts of things. And the map for that, where they're specifically designated, is on the access and mobility map as well. So those are all the implementation steps.
Okay, I think the last thing there was, or comment was, Mr. Pates, you want to make a motion?
Sure. Thank you. Going back to this thing about the rental housing program, I have several problems with it. Number one, and primarily more than anything else, is that I don't think in the comp plan we should be addressing a program that the council has deliberately unfunded, or defunded, or however you want to say it. I just don't think that's our proper role. I remember from that debate that it was a very spirited debate on creating that program. There were a number of complaints about it once it was instituted. It's not just a simple thing, that everybody, of course, wants rental housing in the city of whatever type or location to be properly maintained, and we have code requirements to do that. We have an enforcement mechanism in place to ensure that. And so I just don't think that we've given adequate consideration on the merits of it. And number two, this business, I don't think we should be taking positions on city budget matters. So with that said, I would make a motion that this language, I believe it's two sentences that have been added there on page 186, be deleted, or that it be amended to be more general and to say that the city should make sure that rental properties within the city are properly maintained. But I would just assume delete it, but if somebody else has any other thoughts on that or preferences, then I'd be certainly interested in hearing those. But either way, I'm prepared to make a motion. But either way, I'm prepared to make a motion.
My only comment would be that I think we should keep it in, you know, and just looking at the estimates that we saw in terms of those folks, I mean, somebody making $2,000 a month basically after taxes has given up $800 for an apartment. And I think if they're gonna be, if they're gonna have to live in a place that, you know, and pay that much money significant of their income, I think that they should have a reasonable expectation that the facility that they're renting is in good standing order and that the codes are enforced properly. I don't necessarily agree that we have a fully enforceable program. I mean, there's one person that's doing that now, I think, and I don't think they can do that by themselves to manage all of the rental property in the city of Fredericksburg. I mean, there's, I don't know, what, 1,000 units downtown? I mean, it's, there's a lot, maybe that's a little exaggeration, but there's a lot of units. And when we have 50% of the Fredericksburg is identified as falling in this category based on the study from the United Way, or whatever that one was called, yeah, based on that, based on that study, I think that we should encourage anything that we have an opportunity to do. Council may not fund it, you know, but at least we've taken a stance and done something that's in our purview. And I mean, we have a representative that's on the review for looking at ways to bring affordable housing into the city of Fredericksburg, you know, and I think we're empowered to do that, and I think we should.
Yeah, I was just gonna, since I seem to like to comment on everything, I'll just say, I don't know enough about it to feel strongly about including it or not including it. I agree with Mr. Rodriguez that it ought to be one of our basic tenets as part of the city. We ought to be looking out and making sure that not only do, you know, do our owned units meet the code requirements, but there ought to be some type of a program. I understand there is something now, and I don't know if it's not working. I don't know if it's, you know, that if we currently are falling short, and other than comments from a citizen about it being needed, whether or not that raises the concern at a level of we need to put it in the comp plan. And I just don't know enough about it to really speak intelligently about it.
Our current program is based on a complaint basis. So, if someone complains, you know, we work with them and we work with the property owner. This former program was more proactive. It reached out and it did ruffle some feathers, but I think considering the state of some of the housing, the feathers perhaps needed to be ruffled a little bit. So, I hear what you're saying. Maybe we could think about it as an example and consider some text here. I, just to slightly depart, seeing the hour of the evening, and Ms. Jett has been sitting here patiently talking a little about the CIP. We had talked about having a second meeting in November where we could continue this discussion, and everyone has a life I'm sure they'd like to get back to at some point tomorrow. And I don't wanna interrupt. This has been a good presentation and a good discussion. I don't wanna interrupt the flow, but let me just sort of put it out there, given the fact that it's 10 o'clock, and we'd like to give Ms. Jett at least a few minutes to talk about the CIP. Do we wanna have a meeting on the 28th to sort of continue this discussion? What does everyone think about that?
Say another one in November. We're kinda running out of Wednesdays in November.
So, it'd be November 28th, two weeks.
Yeah, I think we're gonna have to.
Yeah, I think so also.
I'd be okay with it.
The council did extend the deadline for your review to your December 12th meeting, so you do have that time, but I think we shouldn't wait till the 12th.
I personally think that would be good, given the lateness of the hour, that we could give some of these things a little bit more attention, and that might also give the staff some time to think about this particular issue. There's more to it, I can tell you. There's more to it than meets the eye.
I would just ask then, that if there's any sort of clear direction that you would like us to focus on for next meeting, or any issues that you think we really need to investigate more, explore potential other language for, that if you could email them to us so that we could have time to, you know, prepare them in advance so that, you know, we've got another potential good draft to look at as a, you know, to make sure we're making forward progress. That would be helpful for me personally.
Right.
So, do we need a motion to table this for right now? And before I kinda, so can I get a motion to table this?
So moved.
A second, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Pates?
What time do you wanna start on the 28th? Your usual time, or 7:30, or?
There's a few things we gotta cover down on.
I mean, we.
We're gonna run into the same problem tonight.
Things that we've talked.
I'd like to start a little earlier if we could, if that works.
I mean, 6:30?
Mr. Pates, 6:30?
That's fine with me.
Okay. 6:30 on the 28th. And I just wanna emphasize what Ms. Finn said. We've got three kind of major items. So, as you're reading over the document, just to get prepared for that, please email those in, make sure we're all on it, so we understand what the points that folks wanna make, so that as they begin consolidating or responding, we know we're gonna come back in here to talk about and where we just need to come to consensus, please. All right? Okay. So, having said that, that's the end of those. We are at item number seven, which is general public comment, and.
Oh, excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Just for people's information, on this agenda item, at the next meeting, I would ask that the amendments that I've put in the packet for tonight be reincluded, because I'd like to pursue those next time as well. Thank you.
Yes, sir. I have that. Okay. As I stated before, next is general public comment. Do we have anyone from the public that'd like to make a statement? Yes, sir.
Hello, gentlemen. My name's Christian Zamas. I live at 616 Greenbrier Court, Apartment H in the city of Fredericksburg. I wanted to compliment you guys for your diligence on going through all of these items. I'm new to this process, but I've been attending the Makers' meetings every month since they've been going on, and I did wanna address the one statement that I heard tonight, that as a citizen, when reading, when understanding that you guys are modifying the comprehensive plan, and the term Makers' District, to me, I understand it as just a tool, as a term in the plan. And when we're talking about the canal quarter in these meetings, that is how we're going to market this concept to the public. And Joe Blow and somebody that's walking downtown that's hearing about it, they're not as, they won't understand what ordinance 72-51.2 means by any concept of the word or even what TDR means. But they will, when we're talking to new businesses and to, you know, potential partnerships like with the library, when they hear that term Makers' District, they get excited, and they're ready to put their money where their mouth is. And I just wanted to say that I'm 100% in support of what you guys are doing. So, thank you. I'll see you next month or see you in two weeks.
Thank you very much, sir. Anyone else's public comment? Nothing else, the public comment period is closed. So, other business, the FY 2019 capital budget.
Motion to approve?
I just wanna say, before I was, got into budget and public finance, I was a planner, so, yeah. For, she's saying where? I was a planner in Cuyahoga County, which is Cleveland.
Hey, I'm from Cleveland. Wait a minute.
Yeah.
There you go.
Did you grow up in the city?
I did.
So did I.
He was on the wrong side of town. I went to Benedictine.
Oh, wow. I had a boyfriend that went there. Okay, anyways, getting.
This is getting weird.
Getting late. So, Mr. Johnston asked me to come here and kinda give you an update on the CIP process, and I also have an update on some CSP projects. If anybody would like a copy of the CIP, it's right here. I gave these out earlier.
Okay, can you use me with the years on what we just held up?
Sure. It's, this was the CIP that was passed by city council in May. It's from 2019 through 2024. So, the new CIP process will be 2020 through 2025. And again, council will appropriate one year, 2020, and then council will adopt the five-year plan. And last year, we changed it from a five-year plan to a six-year plan.
So, is 20 to 24 online on the website?
Yes, 19 to 24. I can hand these out to whoever wants.
Okay, cause I have 19 to 22, so I'm gonna do a comparison, cause this is what I've had before.
From, okay.
From adopted FY 18.
Okay.
So, and, cause I'm trying to look at what you had, the numbers that are going in here, and what you're about to brief.
I'm sure it's changed significantly, cause it changes every year as we go through. Let me talk a little bit about the process and that kinda will help you understand. So, departments have until November 16th to submit their CIP sheets. And if you remember last year, we added these project sheets that discussed not only the project costs and funding sources, but also the operating impacts. So, departments will go through their sheets and revise the timing, the estimates, the scope, and the narratives when required. For some projects, such as Gateway Boulevard and the stormwater management MS4 permit projects, the funding sources may change as well, because we're aggressively pursuing grants and state or federal funding for those. And then departments are, ask to identify new projects. To date, as I said, they're not due until the 16th. I expect to get additional stormwater-related projects, perhaps some facility projects, but I can present those to you when the city manager's recommended budget is available in March. So, after departments submit their budgets, we'll compile all that information, and then we'll look at the needs against the available resources. And those resources could be operating revenues, such as taxes, current fund balances in the general fund or the operating funds, as well as debt and grants and federal, state grants. And then we balance those together, and usually the needs are this high, and the funding is this high, so we have to prioritize, and the priority is based on need, on council's, their priorities. And then we kinda just winnow through the projects and adjust timing and, because it's important that we not only do new projects, but that we invest in the infrastructure that we have. And those aren't always the big sexy projects, but we've done a lot of that in the water and sewer side where we're replacing lines, and we're getting to the point where we have to do a lot of that in the stormwater. We will have a work session on the CIP during the budget cycle. It may be in January, February, March, April. And then we have a public hearing the third Tuesday in April, and then council is scheduled to vote on the budget the fourth Tuesday in April and the second Tuesday in May. I just wanted to give you guys a little bit of information about the current CIP. We will be pricing bonds to fund $16 million of CIP projects tomorrow, and that will include Riverfront Park, as well as various water and wastewater improvements. Now, since I was last here, the 19th CIP was modified to include an additional project that was a Lafayette Boulevard transit study, as well as to increase cost estimates to College Heights, sanitary sewer and the node and pump station enforcement project. In October, I did a presentation to council, kinda giving them a heads up about what we expect to come up in the CIP. And if possible, I'd like to have that on the computer now. Thank you. Oh, thank you. This was a presentation on the CIP debt and a five-year outlook that we gave to council during their retreat in October. I'm only gonna discuss the capital planning section, but if you would like copies, I can get you a copy of the whole thing.
Please.
Okay, thank you. I will send that out tomorrow.
Can I just ask one question before you begin? So, if you're, I understand the rolling five-year aspect, but you said that there are probably significant changes or major changes in the numbers, and so, is there a variance rule?
No, and I don't know if there will be significant changes. I expect there to be changes. For instance, there's additional information about the scope of a project. What I can do when I come back, when people submit this and we have the recommended budget, is kinda highlight the changes, so we don't have to go through every project, as well as highlight the new projects that are coming. We do not have a variance rule.
Okay, and when you do that, I hate to add something to you, but there are core aspects to the budget? And then there's these new things or ad hoc aspects that come in? I mean, I'm trying to figure out where the base budget comes in, because there are things that you do when it comes to public works, facilities, and the schools annually cyclically for every one of these. I guess in the city of Fredericksburg, it would be whatever you call the, like at Homeland, we call it the FISIP, you know, the Fiscal Year Homeland Security Program, you know? So, whatever that is over five years. And there's a base that I work with, and then there are those additional items that come up, which may only be there for that particular five-year period, and then they're kinda like gone. But there are things that we know every five years that's always gonna be there, like IT. So, do you have the same thing? Would you not?
Yes, but not quite as formalized.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
We have a budget staff of one. So, here, this slide here kind of reflects what the CIP should address. One, it should address the community, as you can see from the small area plans. It's an investment in the future, which is the graphic that represents Gateway Boulevard, as well as taking care of essential public services, and this represents the new fire station. Just a quick look back on what we've funded over the previous five years. You'll see it's a mix of maintenance and expansion, new projects. It's a mix of pay-as-you-go and pay-as-you-use. You can see it's very lumpy. There's some years where it's very expensive and other years where it's less, and we expect that trend to continue. Now, this may sort of address your question, Mr. Gant. So, we have certain amount, certain projects that we are always gonna fund, like buses, technology and equipment for the schools. And then we have other projects that we know are coming. There's projects yet to be identified, as well as expansions at the middle school and high school. I've highlighted projects that we know are going to change or that we have to discuss. The school bus parking facility, this is actually a lease, is going to change. I'm not sure how. I will present that once I have new information. And there's constant discussion, well, not constant, but there's ongoing discussions about the new elementary school, when it will be built and where it will be built. But that's currently scheduled beyond the five-year timeframe. In public works, you'll see there are certain projects that are ongoing, like the historic district improvements. And then we have other projects, the cemetery improvements, which include sidewalks, was partially funded in 19 and the remaining funding in 20. And then we know we'll have to be adding improvements to the city shop. The city shop is the facility that maintains all the city vehicles, and it hasn't been updated since the 70s. Again, just like to highlight two projects, the culvert replacement. We expect that at least for a few years, that 150 number is going to increase as we address some stormwater issues that we have. And then the stormwater management, these figures were put in as placeholders. I expect to get a revised schedule. put in as placeholders. I expect to get a revised schedule, as well as potentially a revised funding. Um, here is the Gateway Boulevard extension. During the process, I expect to get a revised schedule, revised costs, as well as, we should have some information about whether there will be, um, federal funds available for this project.
So, excuse me, you're talking about total costs and not projects being funded through the federal or some other agencies?
That, that is the total cost. If you were to look at the individual project sheets, it would tell you.
Right.
What the funding source was.
So those numbers don't necessarily mean that's what the city's gonna have to pay?
No, but we do show what the city has to pay on an overall basis, by a fund basis, meaning public works, public facilities, public safety, as well as on a project basis.
Okay, thank you.
So, so when saying, and following that track, because you'd, is that the same as the bonds? Like you talked about the 16 million in bonds?
The 16 million in bonds, yes. There, that included some projects from 2018, such as the ERP software system, as well as projects in 19, such as, um, there's some rolling stock, there's Riverfront Park, as well as water and sewer improvements. Some of the projects that were identified for bond funding in 19, were not included in that, because they're not at a point where they're ready to go, for a variety of reasons, and you want to be able to spend your bond proceeds, ideally within three years. So, so we do have a mix, and it will vary from year to year. And we are trying to get on a schedule where we're issuing bonds every two to three years, you know, to kind of do that pay-as-you-use, as well as the pay-as-you-go. Um, some people consider that a more equitable way to pay for big, um, capital improvements. The person who benefits from the project is paying for the use of that, as we pay that service on the life of the project. If you do look in your CIP, the sheets do show what portion is funded, um, by debt versus local revenues, versus state and federal revenues. Um, just quickly, we will continue to have the area planning updates. We may get a revised estimate for that. The fiber network expansion, those will be, um, looked at and adjusted, as well as continued discussion for, discussion on the downtown parking garage. Again, that's currently in the out years of the CIP. In public facilities, again, several projects that are, um, in the out years. We also have a parks plan development that's, we're currently funding this year, as well as in 2021, to look at what we have, what our needs are, and what we need to fund. Again, uh, we're planning for major improvements to the Central Rappahannock Regional Library at some point in the future, and we currently have, um, funding in 2021 for the visitor center, but again, that will have to be discussed. Public safety, again, projects that have yet to be identified, as well as the new fire station. That timing and cost will likely be revised in the next CIP. And in courts, uh, we don't know of any other projects that will be, that are yet to be identified, but, uh, we do have funds to redo the second, to add the second room for the general district court. We kind of have a shell there. This would be to furnish that, as well as improvements to the Renwick Building. And then, um, at some point in December or January, you can invite Mr. Fawcett back, or, um, David King, to give you an update on the expansion, not only at Mott's Run, but at the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, we are working with Spotsylvania County to get updates on that. We do not have them currently. And are there any questions?
Some big numbers.
I, I had a question for you. Does the, um, the other parking garage that's going on Williams Street, where does that money that is being contributed? Because isn't the city paying like $4 million or something like that?
I think that was taken out of the CIP in, for the 2019 through 2024.
Okay.
Do you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah. Does it tiff? Okay, so that doesn't play into?
Uh, there was.
I don't think it's public money.
Uh, uh, you're speaking of the Liberty Place project. I, I think that was all tax, through tax increment financing, which would mean the city would forego the collection of, of taxes, and that would, would stay with the property owner. So, it was not specifically an appropriation.
Okay. I was just wondering how it, how it gets recorded in the city, but, um, uh, my other question, what about like, you know, um, construction projects, like, uh, I don't know, like renovations of the third floor of, uh, uh, 601?
Oh, okay.
Where do those get treated?
That, that is, I'm sorry, that is another major component of our bond issue.
Okay.
3.2 million, I believe, of the bond issue will be for renovation and replacement of the HVAC system in the executive plaza. And that does include renovations to the third, fourth, and first floors, as well as facade improvements. That would not appear in next year's CIP, because it's already funded.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any further questions? Mr. Bates, any questions? Mr. Bates? Oh, okay.
I did send him a copy of.
All right. Anything else? All right. Thank you, madam.
Thank you.
Uh, moving to the next item, Planner Commissioner, their comments on the Housing Action Plan.
Uh, the, the council desired to, as I think we mentioned before, that the Housing Action Plan, we'd do one more shot again at trying to get some regional involvement. So, the, uh, the, the RFP that was supposed to be going out sort of been put on hold to see if we can get that. There's gonna be some discussions with the, uh, community, uh, housing and community development staff, uh, from the state. Uh, so there's, there's ongoing discussions. We'll see if we can do that.
All right.
On a regional basis.
And then moving on to item C, Planning Director Comments.
Uh, the only thing I want to focus on, I think you all got a copy of the draft of our annual annual effort that, uh, Mike and James Newman have been working on like crazy. Uh, it required a lot of effort. Uh, this is a draft. Uh, we'll be looking to discuss this more in detail and probably do a little bit of an update by the, for the December meeting. And, but we wanted to give you a chance to read through it. It, it, obviously it's a lot of information and, and still some more tweaking, that editing that we're doing. Right, you recall last, last year, when you, you do this, you sort of write a cover letter, if you will, and, and we'll send you out the last year's letter, so you can see that as a draft and, and consider what you may want to pull forward on that.
And we wanted to get this to you in time that you could stay ahead of that, because it usually gets transmitted in December. But what, any tweaks we make to this will be minor. Uh, Juck has a real strong preference for how things look in a chart, so we might be changing some stuff around about that. But, but this is, this is basically the information. There's some, uh, we've tried to add a little bit of, of additional information, maybe you'll find helpful. We've tried to list all of the capital improvements, uh, that are in the comprehensive plan, and then track them. So, we thought that was helpful. We did the same thing with the transportation improvements that are listed in the comprehensive plan, so you all can use that as a basis in your letter to say, hey, move up this capital improvement, move around this transportation element, uh, trying to get you that information in the general report. So, that's what you'll see. A lot of information about the council priorities and, and what we're doing to do that, give you a heads up on the policy stuff that we're working on that we're gonna bring down the bike, so.
All right, sir, anything else?
All I got.
All right. And I don't think we have any comments from any commissioners. This concludes the evening. Thank you for your time.